No, we can't get over now.
There we go. Are we going to start without a...
Will we please come to order for the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always want to see that. There is an adjustment to the agenda. At word says at the end, non-public session for negotiations. That will now read non-meeting and be after we adjourn this meeting. I would also like, before we have the public comments, remind us all about our policy. That public comments, a public comment will not be allowed about specific individuals. Such matters should be referred to the appropriate administrator. And that includes inferences of board members or even in a not-so-direct comment. And I'm sure that the board will help me to enforce this because the next thing says the board chair will stop any public comment that is contrary to these rules. So please help me out with that. Thank you for that. Public comments, please. Nothing, then we'll just leap ahead. There is no superintendent actions, so we go to the board actions. Motion to affirm the hiring of an OR middle school special education teacher position.
Those credentials are in your packet, and I'm very pleased to provide Sally Hurchlin a job here in Oyster River. I think she'll do a really great job, wonderful background, and again, adding to the expertise of the district.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the hiring of the Oyster River Middle School Special Education Teacher Position.
Seconded by Al. Discussion.
Dr. Morse, could you share with us, before we get into the hiring of these two positions, because there will be two, are these replacements for people who retired or left the district? Or do we have a new body of students that requires another? Just for my own edification, I'd like to understand why we're hiring two new special ed professionals.
In the case of Sally, she's replacing Susan. And this is a good place. Thank you for the question. And the beginning of the hiring season, the board expressed some concern about the differentials in salaries because several of the people at the very beginning of the summer were more expensive than the people they were replacing. And I, at that point, said to the board, well, we're at the beginning, we'll go through, we'll keep a record. In both the positions that I've hired for this evening, the substantial difference is the other way. In other words, it's costing us significantly less. So using the criteria with the administrative team of always hiring the best people available, there's going to be times when that person's more expensive, there's going to be times when that person is less expensive. So in tonight's affirmations, they're both very credible people, replacing teachers who have left, and the salaries are significantly less than the people they're replacing.
Further discussion? Could we show hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on is the special ed position for boom, 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 the high school. We just did the middle school, right?
Yep.
Yep, for the high school. Anne Golding, again, a very creditable candidate. I'm very pleased to be able to nominate her or have this affirmation go forward tonight. We're very excited about bringing her on board.
Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to affirm the hiring of the Oyster River High School Special Education Teacher Position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom. Discussion. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And continuing through the board action items, and next affirmation is for a .6 psychologist for the Mastway School. And again, Catherine Pullo, her special ed director and her team, did a really nice job of finding us a person who really will do a good job for the Mastway students.
And again, replacement?
Yes. It was a contracted position in 2012-13 that we're bringing into the district salaries for 2013-14.
Do we have a motion? Seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Hearing done. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
We have a request this evening for maternity leave of absence from an Oyster River Middle School paraprofessional. And I recommend that we approve that request.
And...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School paraprofessional maternity leave of absence from 8/26/2013 to 11/15/2013.
That's in two weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
She didn't know she was pregnant before?
She may have, but she decided that it was time to ask for a request to leave.
People go to China to adopt when they find out they're pregnant.
I thought the contract said something about 60 days or something.
Sometimes life doesn't actually go by contracts, and we have to be pretty liberal in our interpretation when it comes to maternity leaves.
I see. Okay. Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? All in favor? Peter in favor?
Thank you very much. Motion to approve high school nominations for department heads and advisors. And all of these positions are spelled out in the master agreement with the guild. And Principal Todd Allen has recommended that we go forward with them, and therefore I do.
And...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School nominations for department heads and advisors.
Is there a second? Kenny. Moved by Ann. Seconded by Kenny. Discussion. Megan.
I'd just like to understand more about the roles and responsibilities of a department head at the high school.
Since Todd's not here, I'll give it a shot. As a former high school principal, I use the department heads basically as a teacher conduit to the classroom teachers, the pass-through work of this body or to pass-through curriculum efforts of Carolyn. The department heads take up a leadership role in curriculum and budget in terms of collecting information and collating it and helping get it in a coherent form to Todd. So the department heads play, I would say, a middle management role in keeping teachers informed, because there's only one Todd, but you have a department head for each content area and then in other areas that, like Unified Arts, are and so forth. So it helps Todd run the school in a way that makes sense educationally and in a way that makes sense in a practical way.
I just want to understand, so if a teacher, say, they wanted to buy certain materials or books, they have to go through their department head to get approvals before they can do that?
Not necessarily. They would do that in the budget development stage. So the team of department head would, their obligation would be to sit with, say, the English teachers and say, okay, here's the course of content that we're going to go through through the year. What materials do we need? And they do that collectively. And then that becomes a budget request to Todd. Todd ultimately is the person who signs off on the requests.
And then related to curriculum, if there was a, and I guess this is a question not just for the high school, but in general, if there was, a teacher felt the need to deviate or do something different from what's expected in the curriculum, does that work through in the department head or is it just directly with Carolyn? Or how does that work out?
Most likely, it's with the department head and Todd. And then if it's, you know, substantial deviation from expectation, then they would probably have a conversation with Carolyn.
Okay.
And Todd would be quick enough to figure that out and say, I think this is, you know, something that we need to bring Carolyn in on.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And...
Dr. Morse, do we have a practice of rotating the head position?
I don't think we have a formal practice. I think what really happens is people step forward as the need arises, and there isn't, surprisingly, there isn't a lot of demand for those leadership roles. And so when people step forward and they're doing a good job, it tends to continue. Eventually, you know, people get tired, if you will, of being the department head chair, and they step down, and then Todd would seek out another replacement. So as much as the department head carries this reputation of being, you know, a really critical part of the operation, it's not a position that people seek out. It's usually sought, they are sought for the position. Say, would you be willing?
Thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then Cory has, whoops, sorry, Jay has, Jay and Cory have presented these names for volunteer positions and paid positions in relation to our athletic program. Again, the salaries are dictated by the master agreement with the guild, and so I would recommend these volunteers and coaches to you this evening.
And...
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School coaches and volunteers.
Discussion.
Megan. I'd like to understand about, a little bit more about the offerings at the middle school. Are these available all grades, these sports?
I'm going to turn that over to Jay Rashad, our middle school principal. He's here this evening, and I'll let him carry the question.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Rashad, the middle school principal. The majority of our offerings, and you'll see, we're actually organizing our clubs now for those types of stipends. We have two school sports that are competitive, grades five through eight. That's the cross-country team and also the track team. The other sports, for example, like soccer, basketball, field hockey, we compete against other local schools in those for grades seven and eight. So another example would be, we have a five-six intramural basketball for girls and boys, but they just play against each other in the gym. We don't travel to other schools. So the only competitive sports for grades five and six is cross-country and track. That's that answer.
So like the volleyball, is that intramural?
We do have an intramural volleyball team. That's in the winter for grades five and six, but it's more for fun and to teach the kids skills. Our seven-eight volleyball team, again, travels and plays against other schools.
Okay.
So five-six is more of a non-competitive type situation for fun, to learn skills, and seven-eight is competitive, again, with cross-country and track being the exception. Is that good?
Yeah. Kind of interested in middle school now.
Sure. Yeah.
Do the coaches teach both the intramural as well as, oh, sorry, five and six as well as seven-eight?
They could. There's different stipends for those positions, and I believe often those are different people. Typically, our five-six teachers gravitate towards the five-six positions, and our seven-eight competitive positions, often our upper-level teachers gravitate to that, though that's not always the case. So, yep.
Do you have any dance clubs or squads?
Well, you know, that's a great question. A lot of our clubs, they're started by students. So, you know, like our chess club was started by a parent who's now moved on to the high school, but it continues on. We have a very successful bridge club. We have a kids' care club. Al's wife helps with that. So sometimes they're volunteer-type situations, sometimes they're paid stipends. So what you'll see is we have a ton of different types of clubs. So it's based on student interest. If I had a group of students that were interested in starting some form of dance club, they would meet with me, the students, and we'd try to figure out a way to make that happen for them after school. The goal in the middle school is to have some kind of club for everybody at some point in the year. We have kids that volunteer, collect pet-type products in volunteer up at the shelter up in Dover. So, and that's, again, it's student-based and selected by students.
Right.
So if kids have an idea, if you're out there coming into the middle school, let me know, and we'll do what we can to support it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. Peter in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Thank you once again. Moving on, we have had a discussion around the order of our agenda. And essentially, what has, what I've noticed in my first year as superintendent is the flow of the agenda is a little bit awkward. We'll be asking you, for example, as a board, to make a motion and second on an issue, to act on an issue, but the discussion for that issue is currently later in the agenda. And the other piece that is a bit awkward is the approval of the minutes by Robert's rules should be one of the first actions we take, and the way that we've structured the agenda to date is it's one of the last actions we take. So these aren't, I mean, all the issues that occur in the current agenda occur in the proposed agenda, but just in a different order so that the flow makes more sense. So we do the approval. We've talked about announcements from the principals, maybe going back and forth, alternating as opposed to every meeting, your own recognitions. Then the district reports. So in that district report, our discussion item may lead into an action item under board actions later. So there's sort of a logic to the conversation and the flow of the agenda. Nothing has been eliminated, it's just been reordered to represent the way conversations really happen here at the board level. So this is the second time that you've seen this, and it's an actionable item, if you wish.
And...
Madam Chair, I make a motion to consider or approve...
Approve.
...approve the new agenda format.
Moved by Ann. Seconded by Al.
I was going to say.
Huh? You were...
Well, it doesn't matter. I spice things up.
I can tell. I can tell Al differs.
Well, you guys always, he's always looking. Okay. I just had...
Kenny has a question. When you ready?
Oh, Kenny.
Just, does it make sense to move the approval of the minutes before the public comments? Because in a way, that concludes our last meeting.
Meeting.
Before we open up our new meeting. Just to switch those two.
Sure. So who made the motion?
Ann.
Ann, if you're willing, you could amend your motion to include moving the minutes before, to be for the public comment.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my motion to move the approval of the minutes, which is currently number four, to the third position and moving public comments to the fourth position.
And the second?
Is Megan or Al? We're going to let them enraise.
My only pet peeve.
You have one?
Many. Regarding the agenda, and this is something you and I have been talking about, and that's, I'm a political kind of junkie, a lazy political junkie. And I know that Tom does a great job bizarrely, I've saw him with school board, whatever they're called, management people. But I'd like that half hour, when some of us are doing the manifests, that when needed, the other three might review some of the bills in Concord and then bring them for as a discussion item if we so wish. Or to meet with, invite, what's your representative, Marjorie Smith or some...
Martha Fuller Clark was our state senator who came here.
Right. Or Martha, or some other of the people. We have many of them during that half hour so that we don't add more hours to our day. But I still get help understanding how these bills affect us. And if it comes down to a discussion item, we can then, as a board, decide if we want to write a letter to them or squawk in some way.
So just in terms of structuring the agenda appropriately so that public knows the discussion's going to happen, I would recommend, Madam Chair, that we, if we're going to have a report on legislative action, that we do it in Section 7 as opposed to that 30 minutes, because there's no way of predicting, you know, that unless you're going to establish 30 and 15 minutes for manifest and 15 minutes for legislative update.
No. Just like it says, non-public session if needed. It could sit under discussion item, legislative discussion if needed.
In that 30 minutes as opposed to the discussion area? Is that what you're saying?
See, I think she's...
I'm looking for clarity.
Okay. In the 30 minutes, three of us, since four of us are busy with the manifest, will decide. This really is a hot one for us. I mean, every bill is not that exciting.
Correct. So I'm trying to figure out how I give public notice to that discussion, is what I'm saying. So if that happens in that 30 minutes, then I haven't notified the public it's happening, so I have to notify the public. So the easiest way for me to do that is to permanently place that item on the agenda, even if we don't use it, so that, so that the public knows the possibility of a discussion like that is going to occur.
That's what I would like.
Okay.
And I'd like our mighty leader here on legislative stuff. What do you think, Tom?
I think, you know, we should periodically have someone, either, probably not me, but someone from the legislature who's actually working on these bills come in and just keep us informed on a regular basis. Then if there's one that we want to act upon, you know, or go to Concord to testify on, we could do something like that. But I think there are, I mean, I think there's a real wokeness of our reps to do that. Martha Fuller Clark was gracious enough to come in before, but I mean, it's been kind of a little bit sporadic, I think. And I think to have maybe, you know, regular basis to have somebody come in, even if there's not too much to report, so we feel like we're on current with things.
And I'm completely supportive of that. I'm not, I'm not against that at all. I'm just, I just want to make sure that, as your legal secretary, I'm giving notice to the public when that happens.
My sense would be, you know, I could understand your, when it comes to manifest meetings, but I think that kind of has two purposes. It seems to me to have a, if you're going to have that kind of report, have it periodically or, you know, put discussion items, you know, a legislative report if needed or something like that, so that we can put it there. Or we might even anticipate it, and we know when we can have it. But maybe every, every six weeks or something, have a report.
Great.
I was going to say, you know, every two weeks seems a little, I don't know how quickly Concord works, but seems a little, you know, too much. But again, like once a month or once every six weeks probably, at that point, you'll have enough bills that come through that you can kind of cipher through them. And if it is more permanently placed on every six weeks, then we'll, I guess, go over it.
And using the discussion item number seven to do that means that it's just an item that we put under discussion, and we know it's going to come up every six to two months, and we make sure it's happened. The way the legislature works is they do a lot of waiting for bills to be published and a lot of downtime on the front end. And by the time they hit about three-quarter mark, that's when bills start really being acted on that have some significance. So the legislature could be in session, and we may not have much of a report from our legislators other than to say, heads up, this is the conversation. But as we get further into the legislative session, there's real substance there that we definitely would want to invite them into. So I, I think the idea is absolutely great. I just would prefer, if you don't mind, to keep it under number seven, even if it does add to the agenda. We'll just make sure that we are cycling it so it doesn't add tremendous amount of time to an already full agenda.
Megan.
Why don't you make a subcommittee to look at this? And then during committee updates, if there's something that needs to be raised, be raised and added to the future agenda, and if it's something critical? You know, I mean, you're talking about something that it's not, you know, it sounds like it's not going to have to be done as regularly as the manifest, and it's going to require individuals researching, reading, talking to people who know what's going on. That work could be done in a subcommittee. It could be public notice, obviously it would be. And then if there's any major updates, then that could be reported during committee updates.
Are you volunteering?
I am not volunteering for that. I actually don't think it's a necessary, I don't feel, I mean, this is the first time I ever heard anyone talk about this. It's something that we really need to do, unless there's some, I don't know. I'm not looking for more. I just think that if you feel like, because what you said initially was that when other people are looking at the invoices, other people will be talking about what's going on in Concord, why doesn't that happen in the committee? You could say, we looked at these things, there would be meeting minutes, people will know. And that committee can decide if there's something important and bring the appropriate representative to our meeting to speak to the greater board. It could add it, talk to you and Tom and Jim, add it to the agenda, or it could be brought up during committee updates. I don't know. I think that it sounds like a lot of kind of work that could be done not, you know, during this meeting.
I brought it up for brainstorming.
Yeah.
You know, who drives whom is always a question to have our representatives come in and tell us what they're doing, or do we look at it and tell them what they ought to be doing?
That's a good idea, right?
And the other, the other person that we could invite in who's not a legislator, who is very, very up to date on all legislative actions is Mark Joyce. You know, we could do that as well. Mark could tell you what's on the horizon, and then later, as things materialize, we can bring legislators in.
So I would, I mean, I certainly appreciate the idea of a committee, and I know the chair knows how much I appreciate committees, but what I would say is let's give it a shot through the discussion issue, and if it develops into something where the board wants to formalize a committee structure, then you could do that at a later date. There is that, like that email that comes out from the Hampshire School Board Association that does have that. And so if anyone doesn't have, isn't on that list, it'll get you periodic updates.
And on the other side of it, I just got an email from Diane Goro summarizing all of the legislative action of this past session. So, you know, we could have somebody come in and say, okay, this is what's changed in the law as well. So it could be a full circle.
Yeah, for example, I think that what's going on with teacher evaluation, what's expected from the state, that would be something that would be really useful for us to know because it's very complex, and it's what the mandate is and where these procedures should go. So, but, I mean, whether I could initiate the invitation to these people so that, you know, when I think something is happening, to bring them in. And then if we want to go farther with that, I think before we go to a subcommittee, I think, with it, see whether we could just have more regular information. That may not be enough to be political enough, but Mark Joyce is a pretty political guy. You know, he can, if there's an issue...
I want to tell them, but I'm uninformed and lazy, you know. I need some kind of... I need some kind of help to be effective in telling them the right thing.
Do we know if any of our current legislatures are on the education committee?
No, not off the top of my head, no.
Who is Mark Joyce?
Mark is the executive director of the New Hampshire Association, New Hampshire School Administrative Association. And there's a second A.
I've heard his name, I didn't...
Very, very knowledgeable.
Because it's that committee, it's the education committee, that's going to have the information that we're interested in. And while our legislators will vote on all of these bills, they're not intimately involved in the formation of them.
Is it okay?
That's why, I don't know what committees they sit on, was my question.
Let me do that work. I'll find out what the current structures are and assignments of our representatives.
Okay.
We can actually look it up right online.
We have a motion. New agenda format. Further discussion.
You know, just, again, back to the whole history of this, was to kind of make sure that when the board was discussing things that were important, it wasn't at the wee hours of the meeting, and we were all tired and ready to go home. And I don't, so I don't want to belittle the announcement and commendations, but that's another place, to me, that seems like, is more kind of routine and doesn't require as much thought. Maybe that's something, although it keeps the principles and things here longer, maybe that's something that can be later in the agenda.
Well, we can try this new structure and see how it works, and then come back if we need to refine it.
Are we ready to vote? Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
And the last action item for the board this evening is a motion to approve the list of policies. Those policies are provided in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve for first reading, policy CM and policy EB.
Moved by Tom, second by Ann. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative.
I just lost my computer screen. Which ones, which policies did you just?
CM and EB for first read.
Annual report.
Oh, first read, I'm okay with the first read, yeah.
You want to see?
No, I can get back there, I just pushed...
Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
Read for motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept, on the second read, to adopt, policy establishing criteria for special education evaluations, code to be determined, complaints about school personnel, reconsiderations in instructional materials and procedure, that's K, I'm sorry, complaints about school personnel's policy, KEB, reconsiderations for instructional materials and procedures, KECNR, public conduct on school property, KFA, and visitors to school. I think that's K, is that KI?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. And that was seconded by Ann. The establishing criteria for special education evaluation brought forward by our special education director as critical that we get that in place. Even though there is no code for it yet. Are we ready to vote? Question?
On reconsideration of instructional materials, and this may be covered somewhere else, but it ends with, the final report will be forwarded to the complainants and the superintendent of schools, and the superintendent of schools whose decision is final. I just think there should be a notification of the board if there's a decision made about school. You know, so could a sentence like, you know, "the board will be informed of any action in a timely fashion," could that be added?
Yep.
Because, I mean, it gives the authority to the superintendent, I'm fine with that. But I think if some material's taken out of the school, we should know about it. Or if some complainants have made a decision to be not to. Just a simple information.
Yep, got it.
That's an amendment?
Yes.
Do we have a second for the amendment?
What is the exact word?
The board will be informed of any action in a timely fashion.
That was seconded by Al. Does further discussion?
Policy, the KEB with public complaints about school personnel. If it go, is there another, what's the, if it's a complaint against the superintendent, how does that get? Is there another policy about that? If the superintendent has all final word, how does it get handled if it's a complaint against the superintendent?
I would assume, and I don't know this off the top of my head, Ed, but if it's a complaint about me, obviously I'm outside of the loop at that point. And you would either, you would either use the assistant superintendent, or you'd bring in counsel.
So that's not spelled out here, but you should, there should be an R to, or something like that.
Oh, an R, yeah, R we can develop.
Are you asking?
Because it does have, in the part that's complaint, you know, complaints about the superintendent have been struck out, so that it doesn't get addressed again in the policy.
It would be done in the R.
Or are you asking that we pull that?
Pull an R.
Make an R.
Make an R.
No, pull the policy and look at it at our next...
Yes, please.
Is that okay?
That would be...
Al, is that okay?
Sounds great.
So the motion is for the, to be determined, and the reconsideration of instructional materials with the addition of, well, we haven't voted on the amendment, and visitors to the school. So could we vote on the amendment to add, notify the board? All those in favor? Everybody's in favor. Peter is in favor of the amendment. Now we're at the motion as amended. All in favor? Peter in favor, motion carries. And policies for deletion.
Make a motion to delete distinguished service award policy AEB, distinguishes award, service award procedure, policy AEBR, and building and ground security policy ECA.
Is there a second? Moved by Tom, seconded by Kenny?
By Al.
The reason we did away with the distinguished service award was that we now found out that we cannot meet in non-public session to discuss this weighty matter. And we'll have to come up with some other process, protocol, for, you know, thanking people that are doing good things. And we're assuming it will come from the principals to us.
Megan? We also said that, at least, I felt this way too. I mean, during our policy meeting, we talked about this. And throughout the year, we're always recognizing significant contributions from people in, you know, staff, committee members, outstanding student achievements. And so we're kind of doing that. It's very, it's kind of hard to single out sometimes one person. And if, like you said, going into non-public is, this doesn't seem, you can't, you know, that's not the right thing to do when you're talking about awarding somebody. You want to surprise them, but you can't do, it's just, it's awkward. Doesn't fit well. And I think we do it anyways, we're commending throughout the year.
Tom?
So, it's my understanding, we could create a committee, say, the leadership team, who would make, who could choose, you know, I mean, if we'd want to go that direction. I mean, this has been in place for a long time, to get rid of it. I'm not convinced that that's where I would want to go. But if we created a committee, that wouldn't be the board, so they could meet, and they could make a nomination.
We wouldn't create it, so...
Superintendent could create it, and, you know, whether it's a leadership team and work together, select one or two people, and then the board would go to them. That would, there'd be no problem with right to know law with that, would there?
No, it's my committee.
Okay. So, I mean, not to make a motion now, but if we did want to continue it, there'd be ways of doing it without having this problem, right?
Yeah, I particularly like that, and I hate to throw more work to the leadership team, sorry, guys, but they're like in the schools, and it's really the outstanding stuff. I mean, when we're kind of hemming and hawing, trying to think, they're more boots on the ground and have a better idea. So it would be really helpful to have them kind of bring things forward, I think.
And I share the sentiment. I think it is, to get an award like that, I think it really distinguishes someone more than, you know, a comment here or there. And I would not like to see that tradition go away.
The team would be honored to go through a process and reckon. And we have so many people who come into the schools and impact the lives of students, that it would be a relatively easy chore for us. Maybe not easy making the decision, but easy for us to get a nominee to the board. So I think we could do that pretty easily.
And the buildings and ground security is covered in another policy.
Safety plans, yep.
So with that, are we ready for a vote? Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries.
Superb. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
If I could go back just for a moment to Tom's conversation about the legislature, I looked it up, and Judith Spang is in fact on the education committee. She is a representative. And it really is quite easy to give a monthly, bi-weekly report of what's going on, because it's provided right on the website. So if that's something that would be useful, it's not difficult for any board member to access it, and for us actually to make a presentation. It sits right, I just did it in the five minutes since we had the conversation.
Internet's wonderful.
You're so fast.
Moving on.
Which, of course, doesn't solve my problems of being lazy and wanting to...
Do you like me to do it for you?
No, I want to be energized. And again, I'm sure she knows what she's doing.
But she's doing what we want her to do.
We need to tell her what we want her to do. She will be doing things, they all are doing things, but not always necessarily what I would like them to be doing. So that was my district reports.
Assistant Senator?
You're not all you...
Good evening. With the start of school coming in a couple weeks, I thought I'd give you just an update of where we are ending up this summer and what's projected as we gear up for a new year. Today was the Common Core State Standards Summer Institute at Portsmouth High School, that the group of curriculum instruction and assessment folks in the southeast region of the state collaborated in a year-long effort. We put this event on, and it was for free to any educator in the southeast region. We had a good number of Oyster River teachers come, as well as many other districts, and be able to network and collaborate around some really high-quality sessions. With gearing up for the new year, next week, we have a whole week of training on some of the new tools that we're implementing. We have two full days of training on STAR assessment. We have webinar training on Atlas. We're getting ready to do training on progress reports for the elementary, the first teacher day back. We also have a new teacher mentor program. That'll be happening on Thursday and Friday, the 22nd and 23rd. Brian Ryan is a high school teacher, he's assisting me with that. I'd like to give him a lot of credit for helping organize that with me. Any and all of you are welcome to come on the second day, the 23rd, to take a community tour on one of the school buses, to see, with all the new staff members, to see all the different schools, the community. And then we're going to stop at the dairy bar and wrap it up, and come back to the high school. I'd like to comment a little bit on the work that happened this summer. I've updated a little bit on some of the committees, but I recently met with the math committee. That's a committee I've been a part of all summer. The work has been involving K-12 mathematics. Some wonderful discussions, unpacking the core for mathematics, what will that look like as we back map it. Also, there's an autism group that's been meeting at the middle school this summer. Involves about 15 staff members, all different positions, looking, originally starting with, how do we best meet needs for a growing number of autistic children in the district? And really, coming to the conclusion that what they were looking at for autistic children is really just best-for-all kids. Looking at putting some criteria in place across the school at the beginning of the year. And there are many other groups that have met this summer, and I want to commend them for the work they've been doing this summer. Dennis, Ellen, Irvin, and myself went to Boston last week. We were invited to an everyday math, two-day session, to discuss some of the improvements and developments with the tool. University of Chicago, it's a research-based, standards-based mathematics elementary program. They were present to discuss some of the developments, as well as the publisher. We are proud to be one of four districts that have been invited by the Council of Chief State School Officers to be the only district membership invited to CCSSO to be a part of the Implementing Common Core National Work Group. So we are, have the ability to be on the table, around the table for the national discussion, along with South Heagan, White Mountain Regional, and I want to say, I'm always going to get this wrong, it's Heather Cummings. And she is in the different regions of the state we're all representing for New Hampshire, and we're working with the Department of Education. So just a few things before we start into our school year and get ready for the sprint of the year. It seems to fly by, the summer has flown by. But I just want to commend the staff and leadership for just the high-quality work that we've sustained through the summer. So, thank you.
No one of these buttons makes this thing stop. So as I begin this particular presentation, I want to let the board know that I understand completely that I will be solely responsible whilst breaking the nine o'clock barrier tonight. Everybody else, if we didn't have this presentation, we would be in our usual good place. But this particular presentation is pretty significant. The last time that we had a presentation was the end of May. We did a public setting, and had a lot of great feedback in that public setting that helped refine this proposal this evening. The intent of this proposal is to give you and the public an update of the work that has occurred since May. And I tried really hard to keep it under 100 slides. Managed to keep it around 70. And I do want to introduce Superintendent Jim Hayes in the room, and board member from Newmarket, Cliff Chase. And the reason that they are here tonight is because a piece of what we've been doing over the course of the summers continues to meet with school systems that are interested in working with us. And so this presentation really is about bringing the board up to speed and giving you a sense... you a sense of where we are. This presentation, or variation thereof, will be given in the fall at some point in a public meeting as well, and again, seeking feedback. So in the May meeting, I articulated what the goals were of bringing in tuition students. The idea behind bringing in tuition students is really to maintain our current programs and more importantly, to enhance the programs we have, to decrease our, decrease our per student cost, to generate alternative revenue streams, meaning can we bring money in other than from the taxpayers of Oyster River Cooperative School District, and to lower our tax effort. So it's two-pronged, enhance our education, lower our local cost, and to use this facility to its maximum potential. This is a beautiful high school, recently renovated, with many attributes that make it a beautiful place to educate students. So again, some of these slides are reviews, but they're important just to establish the context of the discussion. We in Oyster River experienced our peak enrollment in 2000 and it was almost 2,400 students. But since that time, the total student population has been decreasing and is currently 1,944 students. Long Range Planning Committee indicates that their projections show that will decrease another 392 students. And just as a reference point for that, as recently as 2002, there were 130 births in the district and 10 years later, only 70. So the Long Range Planning Committee has done a really good job of giving us a sense of where we have been and where we are. The tough part is projecting where we will be. So these are the, some of the numbers right out of the Long Range Planning Committee report. And you can see where we would be in 10 years if we accepted no students from any other town, including Barrington, we would be down to 555 students. This is just a graphic representation of that same data that give you a sense of, you know, peaking and then declining. And of course, you know, the model that the Long Range Planning Committee uses is called backcasting, saying can you predict the future by looking at the past? And so, you know, that's the model they use. And as Lisa is very quick to point out, there is an average error in her estimates that increases over time to as much as 8% when you're 10 years out. So that 8% could be up, meaning there would be more students, or it could be down, meaning there would be less. So it's a plus or minus 8% as you, the further you go out in time, the closer you are to the date you're at, the smaller the average error. Again, just confirming, you know, because people are often challenging why we would be having the numbers we have from the Long Range Planning Committee or from Niasq or from other organizations, and it's largely the fertility rate nationwide, but particularly if you look at New England, New England has one of the lowest fertility rates in the country and within New England, New Hampshire has the lowest. So birth rates, fertility rates, enrollment decline, it's not just happening in Oyster River, it's happening in the state of New Hampshire, Maine, New England generally. Populations are moving out and births aren't happening. So the board authorized me to have a capacity study done and a friend of mine recently looked at the slide and said, well, remember that's 85% capacity you're putting up there, so I want you to understand that when we say there's room for 1,205 students, if we used New Hampshire guidelines, that's assuming that that's 85% of the space is being used in this building. Why do they use 85%? It's in order to make sure that you can move children in a reasonable way. If you had 100%, then as Peter's going for class, he literally would be elbowing his way through the hallways and his classes would be very, very, very big. So 915 students is what the capacity studies showed based on our own policy. It's a policy 2B, IIB says that you want to have your classes running between 18 and 22. So the issue is often misunderstood in the public that we have class sizes that are less than 18, but we don't have any class sizes that are more than 22. The answer to that is we do indeed have class sizes that are smaller than 18 and those classes would be special ed classes. They also would be art classes and you say, well, why can't we fill up 22 art kids? You don't have 22 seats at the table. You have an art class that only can hold 14 students. That's the size of the room and the students and the availability of space. The same thing happens in your shop classes, there's a limited number of students because there's a limited number of machines that kids can be working at. So I think that we've, in the year that we all have worked together, we've really addressed the class size issue and have worked very hard to make sure we stay within the board policy. And you'll see that later in the enrollment report at the elementary level. So there's your board policy guiding decisions that I make or Todd makes or the administrators make. And then the building utilization factor, that's that 85% factor. So this is a new slide and it begins to talk about what we would do with revenue. So currently, we have approximately 80 students, 73 to 83 students will know on the opening of school, tuition students from Barrington. We put 100% of that tuition money against our tax effort. So we're not spending any part of that money to date for hiring a teacher or creating new program. It literally is being used, nearly all of it is being used to lessen the tax effort. So we know that in the three districts we've been talking to, Barrington is around 100 to 125 students, Deerfield's around 180 students, and New Market's between 240 and 290 students. What happens with that revenue is really a decision you'd make during budget season, but I want to just kind of put it out here in this presentation, this is how I would see it going. So if the first level is Barrington, we put it all against tax relief. But what happens if it's Deerfield, that would be the next level of students? And quite honestly, believe it or not, even though there's that additional 80 students, we've already captured through Barrington the tax relief that's out there. Because once we skip into the 180 student category, we have to hire staff. So if we go with Deerfield or if we offer Deerfield seats for Oyster River, it won't look any different than if we offered Barrington seats, except that it solidifies our course offerings. But when we get into a school system like New Market with 240 to 290 students, then we are increasing tax relief. We're actually maybe able to articulate a stream of funds that would allow us to work on capital improvement. And again, a friend said to me, capital improvement is tax relief. If you're not asking the taxpayers for it and you're using tuition dollars to do it, it's tax relief. And you all know that we have $4 million worth of capital needs articulated in our facilities plan. And then we would use half of it for educational purposes. Now that could be maintaining programs, but at this point, we would also be able to enhance programs. So remember, you know, in terms of how this all works, we're talking about the school side only. So if we were able to impact tax relief from our side, it doesn't necessarily mean that the towns and, the towns wouldn't say, well, here's an opportunity for us to build a fire station, or here's an opportunity for us to do public works on the town side without increasing the tax effort. So when I'm talking about tax relief, I'm talking about how it would impact from the school side only because the town and county will be making different decisions based on what their needs are. And I say that because I really want to emphasize that I'm not promising tax relief. What I'm committing to you as a superintendent is I think that we can impact the taxes in the district only from the school's perspective. So if we went to the place of, you know, 250-plus students, we would be able to reduce taxes about $300 per 100,000. So a $300,000 house would see a $200 reduction in their taxes approximately and so forth, $600,000, a $400 reduction and so forth. So I share this as an example, not, you know, not a guarantee. These numbers that Sue and I have worked pretty hard at to try to give some sense of what the impact would be, because this is one of the questions that we received in May. In terms of the capital needs, we all know what they are. You've seen them exhaustively, you know, the boiler replacement at the middle school, the ventilators and boiler replacement at Moheramet, the addition of a cafeteria at Moheramet so that we could continue to run our phys ed program through the day instead of stopping phys ed in the middle of the day for an hour and a half so we can feed kids, which we don't have to do at Massway, we only have to do that at Moheramet because there's no place else to feed the kids. So some, just some of the issues. We've done, and by the way, we did do quite a bit of this kind of work through our energy arrangement that you all approved of last year, but there's still a massive amount to do. And it's disproportionate, about half of our capital needs are at the middle school. So you're looking at $2 million of capital needs at the middle school. But when you get out to this building, you know, it's fairly marginal because of the upgrade and the two elementary schools aren't big enough to be substantive drainers, so all three other schools together would be the other half. When we add staff, we would be adding staff to the core areas as a first cut, meaning that we would need a couple of English teachers, we would need a couple of math teachers, we would need an additional world language teacher. Doesn't need, doesn't necessarily mean, and the world language is a good example of this, that we repeat the courses we already have, Spanish and French. This gives us an opportunity, not just in world language, but in English and math, to offer courses that we don't currently offer. So that gets to the idea of the value added that we talk a lot about. So it's not just, just add another English, it's what English could we add that would be something that we don't currently have that would make it an exciting opportunity for our students? What math could we add that would make it another exciting opportunity for our students? Because we need to have those teachers, but it doesn't mean that we have to repeat what we have. We can really look at those additions as value-added and a enhancement of our curriculum. Then we can talk about the idea of other ways that we could use the tuition dollars. And I talk about all-day kindergarten, doesn't necessarily have to be at the high school. I put that example in there specifically because that's our most recent conversation. Could we use tuition dollars to enhance our kindergarten program? Yes, there's nothing that locks the tuition dollars to only doing things at our high school. Strings is an issue that we've talked about. The more students we have, the more opportunity there is to beef up programs that really need students. And so when we get into programs like music, we have a real opportunity to enhance and create a music program that our current student numbers don't allow us to have. In particular with the New Market option, Jim Hayes, the superintendent, negotiated his renewal with the town of New Market that should, should New Market ever send their high school kids here, we would have as Oyster River the same opportunity to use the New Market fields that New Market Junior/Senior High Schools had forever. So in his foresight, he was able to have that conversation with the town of New Market and my understanding is, the reaction was, of course, if our kids are going to Oyster River, then we would make our facilities available to Oyster River students as well as New Market students. So that gets into that issue of value-added once again. We can't go out and pay to build the kind of fields that New Market already has, but we can as a tuition-receiving high school have that as an option for our kids. We could use it to build the very, very much needed cafeteria at Moheramet. I can't emphasize enough how much we have to be thinking about that and really is one of the primary issues that I hope that we can address through our upcoming budget season. We can offer technology classes. Currently, we have robotics as a club. There's enough interest to bring that into the curriculum. Programming skills, coding skills. We have none of those types of courses because we don't have the student body to support. So those are some of the ways that we could enhance programming. I put this particular slide in is just to give you a sense of, you know, districts in our immediate area really are putting quite a lot of effort locally in their taxation. So that first column with those big, long lines, those are the towns of our school system, the red is Barrington, the blue is Deerfield, and the green is New Market. And I put that there because sometimes what is being said is that the other districts aren't putting out the same kind of local tax effort that Oyster River is. And so you can see that Barrington currently is the outlier because of their arrangement with Dover. But if you look at Deerfield and New Market, their local effort to support the education of their students is very close to ours. The other question is, you know, what's the free reduced rate in these school systems? What's the special ed rates in these school systems? And, you know, to no surprise, ours is the lowest in terms of free and reduced lunch. But when you look at special ed rates, they're all very much on top of each other. And the only place that, in this case, the outlier is New Market in terms of free and reduced lunch. But later in the presentation, when I show you the academic performance of these school systems, I think you would be really impressed. So here it is in sort of a dollar and cents fashion. Our per-student cost is $16,502, this is local, state, federal. Deerfield is 15-2 and New Market is 15-1. And again, the outlier being Barrington, again, because of their long-term contract coming to an end with the city of Dover. So I just want to talk a little bit about what each school system has in terms of what they could bring to the table. We're currently experiencing the Barrington option. We've seen it grow from five years ago to just a couple of kids to this upcoming year, anywhere between 73 and 80. Barrington has the ability to fill about one-third of our seats. It has, we have a minor need for the first time this year. We'll be hiring a special education teacher. But I want to make sure the board and the community understand that as we're hiring this special ed teacher, we have established a surcharge in relation to the cost of special education for Barrington. And so in effect, that surcharge is going to pay for the special ed teacher. So again, at no point are Oyster River tax dollars being used to supplement any other school system. We already have a great relationship with them. One of the unique pieces of Barrington is that they have choice. Choice means that they don't have to come here, and in fact, they don't all come here. Half of them go to Dover and about 22% come here and, you know, 23% go to Co-Brown and the difference is other school systems. So, you know, it's a, it's a pretty diverse system. It causes them unique issues in terms of having a conversation with us, and I'll talk about that later. And what do we use the money for? To fill those seats that would normally be empty. So we haven't had to hire any staff and, except for the special ed teacher coming up. And we use all of the revenue to offset local tax effort. So it's been a really good deal for both parties. Wanted to give you a sense of what would happen in terms of total enrollment if Barrington students say they were allowed to grow, the 125 is the highest that we have seen from Barrington in our conversations. To give you a sense of that, it means that, you know, at some point, we would reach, you know, 739 students, but then we go right back down to 680. You'll see that kind of bell curve happening with every single school system we're doing business with. And why is, why is that happening? It's happening because of Oyster River. We're getting smaller and so they're able to fill in some of those spaces, but not all the spaces that we have available. So that's what happens, very, hits the mid- So that's what happens, very, hits the mid-700s, and then it starts going right back and down to low 700s and, and high 600s. Graphically, what does it look like? The green is everybody. The orange is us, and the blue is them, because Barrington has got a ceiling of 125. Their blue doesn't grow beyond 2016, 17. Where do the tuition dollars go? We've talked about this. Continues to go to offset our operating costs and therefore help taxpayers. If we were to work with Deerfield only, Deerfield fills about two-thirds of the seats. It's almost an exclusive arrangement. They want to have 10% of their kids be able to have choice. They have a lottery system now. So of those 188 kids, we'd get about 169, 170 of them. We would need to hire staff. It would help our program because we'd be filling seats and maintaining a program that we're very proud of. And the taxpayer relief is already captured. So how can that be? Because you're bringing in so many more kids. You're recognizing if Barrington goes, you're replacing them with Deerfield kids, and so it's a net wash in terms of, of taxpayer help. Again, like the Barrington slide, this gives you a sense of where the growth would be. And the highest it would get is in the 784, and then it shrinks right back down to 723.
Peter has a question.
Pete?
Oh, I was just wondering about the option two. He says it's Deerfield only. Would that eliminate Barrington students from our tuition agreement?
No, it'll come up in a little bit. The Barrington and Deerfield together option is, is an option.
Okay.
For sure. So thanks, Pete.
Yep, thank you.
Again, just graphically capturing this. You can see what's happening in the total enrollment. You can see our high school in orange and Deerfield in blue. The thing about Deerfield that's unique is the time of the transition. We're unsure whether the transition would be three years or six years. Largely, that's a conversation internally between them and Concord. The suggested per-student cost, they would like it to be very similar to, you know, what we do with Barrington. We would be able to use about 40% of it for taxpayer relief, you know, pretty marginal compared to Barrington in terms of an increase. And then we would use the rest for staffing. It's about a quarter of a mil decrease. By the way, the concept of a mil goes all the way back to the beginning of our country. It's one penny. So it's kind of an interesting piece that nobody really understands because, you know, it's several hundred years old, and it's not how we talk today, but technically, it's a mil. Except both, here's your, Peter. If we accept both Barrington and Deerfield, we essentially have the same impact as if we'd went with New Market. They fill most of our seats. We would be able to enhance programming. We would be able to offer significant taxpayer relief. So it's, it's a very similar model to the New Market model.
Jim, do you want us to hold off on questions, or?
I would, I guess, why don't we do that, just because it's such a long presentation, and then I can answer questions, and we don't, because Jim's going to come right in behind me and do several slides as well. So the New Market only, and I apologize, I should have given you all no dose tonight, but what happens in this particular presentation is the detail becomes more and more important as we go through these public presentations, and it's pretty hard to bring levity into something like this, so bear with me. If we did New Market only, we're talking about 245 students in the first year. It is an exclusive arrangement. Remember, Barrington was choice, and Deerfield was largely exclusive. With New Market, it's completely exclusive. We would enter, unlike Barrington, we would enter into a long-term relationship. We would require additional staff. Our per-student cost in our framework, and we have to really be clear about this, there's been no agreement with New Market. These are concepts, frameworks for discussion. They are willing to pay what it costs us in this framework, the suggested framework. So there's no discount to the seats. So for example, if we go back to Barrington, we sell them a seat for $13,500 per student. And New Market is saying, well, you know, your cost is between 15,000 and 16,000. We would come in and pay that cost, and not asking for a discount at this point. I mean, maybe when we get into final negotiations, you know, that would change. But for right now, the concept is they would pay what we pay. Clearly, it helps maintain our programming. And more importantly for me, as a superintendent, it allows us to look at expanding and enhancing our, our programming, not just academically, but athletically. And instead of doing .25 mils of effort, we could get all the way up to a half a mil per effort, which a friend of mine told me equates to about 5% of their tax bill. So, you know, I, I put that out there because he felt that that would be a more easy way of people understanding the concept, that they get a 5% discount in taxes, assuming that it's not spent on the municipal side. The deal of Barrington, of New Market, that's, you know, somewhat unique, is that it would push Barrington out over time, but as you'll see, and as we look at the enrollment slide, as we go out in time, the Barrington numbers go down dramatically. But as we get smaller, it opens up more seats again, so that we may have to, in the short term, decrease the number of Barrington kids, but in the long term, Barrington could still be a player here, so we could have a New Market-Barrington combination to some degree. This gives you a sense of where we would be in terms of the enrollment projections. The opening year, so I want to be very clear about this, because this is another one of those places where we get confusion. The start of the New Market arrangement would be 2015, 16. We often talk about the beginning year as 2015. It's 2015, 16. We get a little bit lost in that particular piece, and I was challenged at the last meeting, and I fumbled it. So New Market, in that year, has about 254 students. We have about 581 students. So the opening year of this agreement would be 835 students, well below the 915 at 85% capacity. It does, just like the other systems, begin to do a bell curve, and we hit 2019, 20, and the projections show 902 kids. That's the zenith, that's the highest number that we reach. And then look what happens after that. It goes right back down to, quite frankly, will we begin? I mean, there would be in 2022, 23, 836 kids. And this is why I was saying that we don't have to end the relationship with Barrington, but over a course of years, we would have to diminish it. But then as our numbers go down and New Market's numbers replace, they're not replacing at the same rate, so it does create opportunity for us to continue to work with Barrington, even if it's at a lesser rate. Again, the graph, the same graph you've seen before. The green is the total enrollment. The blue is New Market, and the orange is us. So, you know, how does this translate into revenue? 254 regular students. By the way, we wouldn't charge Barrington extra for special ed students unless that special ed student is out of district, or unless we get pulled into a due process hearing or some kind of extraordinary cost not anticipated. So when we talk about $15,000, $16,000 per student, that includes the cost of their special ed students. Whereas in Barrington, up until this past year, we were, we were charging them $13,500. And then this particular year, we started thinking, wait a minute, you know, we're going to have a new cost associated with that, and we added the $6,000 per, per special ed student. We wouldn't have to do that with New Market. So we, we anticipate in this presentation somewhat more than $4 million as a revenue. How would we use it? I'm using the 50-10-40 rule. 50% would be used for education. And again, you know, 10% for capital improvement. Articulate that as taxpayer relief, if we're not chasing after tax dollars to do the work that we need to do. And then 40% is pure tax relief. So again, you're looking at $200 per household on $300,000. You start seeing some significant progress being made in terms of taxpayer relief. The other question I've been asked consistently is, what if we did nothing? Kind of the do-nothing option. Quite frankly, I call it the nuclear option. I call it a nuclear option because although it works all well and good on paper, the piece that's not here, and I'm going to try to articulate this right now, is the impact it would have on our educational programming. No students means that we would have to redefine how we deliver academic programming at this high school, far different than it would be if we had tuition students. So again, a friend said to me, well, this looks pretty easy. Why wouldn't we just do this? Because it impacts the quality of the program, folks. So I just, even though I've done and tried to answer this, I just don't want this to go by the wayside without an understanding that a 555 high school student body is far different academically than a 685 student body or an 835 student body. Because the more students you have, the more programming you can offer those students because it's mathematically viable to do so. You have enough students to support courses. The fewer students you have, fewer, fewer options you have in your curriculum. So the curriculum becomes more restrictive. Class sizes will likely increase. I mean, you, you just don't have as many options. It is likely that we would cut jobs, and this facility would be used relatively inefficiently. Now, this is a what-if scenario, so as you're going through this and you look at this, remember, we haven't had this conversation. And so I'm very, very clear at the top of this. This is subject to school board discussion and approval. And so if we end up going the no-tuition route, this isn't gospel. This is here as an example to give you a sense of what could happen. King of the mountain, as opposed to superintendent, if we go down to 1,600 students, my recommendation would be to close the middle school. There's just not a really viable reason for you to keep a middle school that is the most expensive building you have, and when you could utilize this facility to occupy the, the middle school. It's the most up-to-date facility. It's gorgeous facility. The middle school is problematic in terms of its capital needs. We know that over $2 million of capital needs exist there. It's also a school that wasn't designed to be a middle school. And so Jay and his staff, really her, doing a great job using a building that wasn't designed around a middle school concept. I would be recommending, for your consideration, that we move the fifth grades back to the elementary schools, because concurrently during this time period, you may recall that our elementary schools are getting smaller, notwithstanding tonight's report, but our overall elementary numbers are going down. So bringing the fifth grade back helps repopulate the elementaries, but it also gives you the opportunity to consider using this building as a six-through-eight wing. In fact, the wing we're in right now, I've walked with Todd and Jay, and with relatively, and I say relatively, little cost, we could convert this wing into a middle school. And that would work. The advantage of sharing the middle school and the high school is they have essentially the same electives. So kids who are taking Spanish or French, or kids who are taking shop, or kids who are taking FCS, or kids who are taking art, you have a common wing already established in this building largely, not exactly, but largely, in the cafeteria wing, where high school and middle school kids could take those courses. They wouldn't mingle. They would have their own unique courses. And the downside of this is, you know, I can see, you know, over three dozen staff losing their jobs in, in this scenario. If we don't have students, you need to proportion your staff accordingly. So separate wing, we bring the guidance that's down here, way up into the front. I would be promoting a separate middle school entrance. So if you go to the end of this wing, where the special ed people are and guidance are, I would create a place for Jay Rashad to be principal of the middle school, and I would create a separate entrance that would look nice, like the front. I would create a roundabout for the buses right there, so that we wouldn't have to have parents and buses mingling. So, and then you have a staff parking lot. You would end up cutting back, most likely, and you may not need to, because this high school will be that much smaller, the number of students and parking spaces. Cafeteria is beautiful. It's big enough to handle, so that's not an issue. And the, the senior area, which is right outside our door, which are enclosed, would make ideal computer lab areas, you know, because you want to make sure you have them in air-conditioned and spaces. You know, in terms of how I see the cost savings, obviously, we wouldn't have the operational cost of the middle school. I would see about 25 professional staff going to administrators and eight support staff people. Plus, we wouldn't have to make the future investment of $2 million into the middle school. So as I said, as I was going through this, this all sounds like a real slick answer to our problems, but I just want to make sure that we keep in mind that it has dramatic impact on the educational opportunity for our kids. The, probably the biggest capital need would be to create a separate entrance for the high school into the library, because the current main entrance to the library is actually would be in the current middle, proposed middle school. Well, it turns out that in the design of this building, there, the library actually has two levels, and those two levels are directly opposite the three-story wing. So you could create a two-story entrance into, two hallway entrance into our current library from the high school, so that the high school kids would have a principal entrance into the library, so it would work, work very well. We have four science labs on this floor. We would have to add science labs to the third floor, because those labs would belong to the middle school. So, you know, we talked pretty well now about the, the different scenarios, and we've talked about the possibility of doing nothing. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of assumptions around all of this, and that is, as we've worked with our, our neighbors in New Market, we just had to assume a fixed point in time. So when you see numbers, you know, the numbers are based on 2013, because that's a known quantity for us. And it doesn't account for the impact of legislature, like they did this past year with, with the cost of retirement going to the locals. It doesn't include negotiated agreements. It doesn't include the cost of health, health insurance, which we know has always been higher than the cost of living. So there's a host of other variables outside our control. Going back to New Market in terms of, since that's the one that has the biggest impact for us in taxes, this slide, just try to capture it town by town, and what happens when New Market comes in and over a couple of years. So essentially, what happens is it pushes us back in time in terms of our tax efforts for the school side. So the other big piece that I got hit with in May was, well, these school systems aren't as good as us academically. So part of this is to present that these school systems put out, with the exception of Barrington, on a per-dollar basis, almost what we spent. So how do they do academically? And believe it or not, I cut out about a dozen of these slides today. So I'm going to show you grade three, grade five, and the high school. To give you a sense, these are kneecap scores on who's proficient. And, you know, you look at the, the data, and nobody's really kind of crazy out of, out of the ballpark. You know, in terms of our grade three math results, we had 84% of our kids proficient. Deerfield was 83, New Market was 80, and Barrington was 71. So as a graph, what does that look like? It kind of looked similar, you know? Not, not hugely different. In the same grade in terms of reading, Oyster River is at 90% proficient. Deerfield was 89, New Market was 83, and Barrington was 76% proficient. What does it look like as a graph? Not dramatically different. Now, why did I choose grade five? I chose grade five because this would be the grade that if we were to enter into an arrangement with New Market, would be the entering ninth grade. So how does it look? Oyster River's at 87, Deerfield's at 84% proficient, New Market's at 83, and Barrington's at 66. This would be the class, if we do come to an arrangement, that we'd be entering graphically. You can see, you know, how the systems compare. What does it look like for reading? You know, at grade five, 87% proficient here. You know, at grade five, 87% proficient here, 93% proficient at Deerfield. It's one of the few places where we got beat. New Market, 82%, and Barrington, 75%. Same data graphically. And then finally, I wanted to do a comparison of the high schools. But remember that Barrington and Deerfield don't have a high school. So the comparison really is between us and New Market. And, you know, remember going back to the poverty level. That's their biggest issue that they struggle with in terms of their socioeconomics. And look at the growth that we see in New Market in three school years. It's pretty amazing. Same time, our math scores, you know, are good. Why don't I say great? Because they're not great. They're good. Compared to the rest of the school systems in the state of New Hampshire, they're good. That's a whole nother editorializing that Carolyn and I could go on about, but for this particular slide, it's okay. So here's what's happening in the two systems. And I think what I would also share with you is, the rating of high schools is by adding the reading score and the math score together and getting a composite score. I would tell you that statistically, that's nonsense, but that's the modus operandi in the state of New Hampshire. You add two disparate scores, and you come up with a composite score, and you say, you rank your high schools. Very suspect in terms of statistics, but that's how it's done in the state. So having said that, Oyster River is number 10, and New Market's number 12, when you combine scores. So again, not a huge difference. And here's the reading results for 11th grade. Remember where New Market was in fifth grade? Remember their 25% poverty? And then look at the results by the time the kids get to 11th grade. Pretty impressive. And I'm editorializing a little bit because I've always felt that that was impressive when I've looked at it. So what we know from the survey that UNH put together is that 60% of the population is supportive of the concept of tuitioning, and 10% of the population, up to 10%, is not. And the top half of this graph represents the issues for the 60%, and the bottom half of this graph represents the issues for the 10%. And the most, the biggest issue for that 10% is class size. And that's something that is controlled by this body. And we have said 100 times to Sunday that we would honor board policy. So it's not likely, in fact, it would be impossible if we're following board policy, that our class sizes would increase. I just say that because it's just, all of the work that we've done to date is using your policy. And again, I kind of like this one just because it says, what a good job you all are doing, our teachers are doing, our administrative people are doing, our support staff are doing. When you go to good to excellent and you get these kind of results, we are on the right path for our citizens. One of the other places we were challenged in that May meeting is that we were told that the staff at this high school does not support tuitioning. The staff at this high school surveyed themselves. Wasn't the administration surveying them. And we are at the place where 95% of the staff in this building do support tuitioning kids. And they are understanding the concept of what children bring in when there's more of them. And in that survey, their first choice would be Barrington, which makes sense because Barrington is here. Their second choice would be Barrington-Deerfield combination, and their third choice was New Market. Now, when I say their third choice, all of those numbers were right on top of each other. So it's not like, you know, if we went one direction or the other, the staff is going to be upset. They just wanted to be able to communicate to you and to me that they are indeed supportive of tuitioning students. So, you know, we've had, we've lived through this time period in terms of where we've been. We've had multiple conversations now at the board level. We've had multiple conversations with the towns and the select people and the counselors, and we've had multiple conversations with the people in general at public meetings. And in the end, really, it's coming down to a time when the school board itself is going to have to become far more definitive in where it is. At the last board meeting, Megan asked me about preparing a budget. And I said, "Well, we're not there yet," and that's because we got confused over the 2015, 16 school year. But for me to prepare a budget with or without tuition kids, we need to make a decision this fall. And so when I say October, early November, what I'm hoping is that you will have filtered through all the information that we've collected and as a body say, "Okay, this is the school system or systems we want to work with. Let's make an offer." And then that school system has time to negotiate fine points with us. Both school systems or three school systems have time to communicate effectively in public meetings with the communities. And then your vote then has to be validated at the polls by the people. So in order to do all that work, late October, early November is really important so that by the time we hit March, we have done a thorough job of communicating with our citizens and the towns and school systems involved will have time to do the same thing at their end. So the timeline for us, if we're going to get this done and not be in panic mode, is late October, early November, before Thanksgiving, to give us time to communicate effectively. The most important piece is so we would have time to communicate. So when the people go to the polls, they'll be informed, and they can either support or not support and understand what both choices mean. So the most important part of the presentation, no decisions have been made. I know that every time I stand up, I say that, but really want to make sure that people hear, no secret deals, no, nothing can happen without the public body and public session having the conversation and taking a vote. What I do is only to provide a structure for information so that you can make a vote. And I want to say, take the time to thank Al and Tom because they have attended every meeting possible with these three towns on sometimes very short notice to keep me straight and narrow and help me get a better understanding of where we would be. Nobody's agreed to anything. That is your job as a body. So that's where we are in this presentation. And Jim, do you want me to take questions before you put your piece on? Okay. So Jim's going to follow up with a brief presentation, but here's a good chance for us to take a break and just ask questions of me. Kenny?
I have a whole list of questions. I don't know.
I'm going to grab a pen, Ken.
All right. So if anyone wants to stop me off at some point.
We all have a lot of questions.
First one is on slide 10. And when we talk about taxpayer relief. Just trying to understand. So let's say we have 100 students, and that's 100% taxpayer relief.
Right.
Then we go up to 180, and we get the split 60-40. Is that 60-40? So is that 60-40 based on the 80 additional over 100 students? Keeping the 100 pure? Okay.
Yeah. That's why I said that when you go there, we've actually captured it in the Barrington numbers because it's not net new, except for a few. You know, it's not a huge difference.
So we keep that initial part? Okay. Then a question with Barrington on the slide 19, where Barrington's, your estimate always tops out at 125. Is that set in stone?
It's, that number comes right from Barrington. So there was a point in time where, in the conversation, Barrington got pretty bold and started talking to us like New Market's been talking to us. You know, "What are your needs?" I said, "200 students." We had a great conversation that night. They went away, they came back, and they said, you know, "We've talked." I was pretty excited about the conversation because it felt like, you know, we were going to, you know, get a significant number of Barrington kids. And they came back in the next meeting and said that the most they were comfortable with was 125. And the other part of that, Kenny, is that their offer is really not an offer to us. It's an offer to their own parents. So 125 could be 87, could be 98, it could be 125 because of the choice issue. So they're not guaranteeing us 125, but for this particular slide, I was just trying to make it simple and say, "Okay, we captured all 125."
Okay. So that answers that one.
Yeah.
The next one, I could...
Slide number?
Maybe this would come up.
Slide number, Ken.
Yeah. So slide 27. And it talks about the no-discount cost that New Market is proposing. And I'm curious to what, at this time, the cost per New Market student is to New Market?
About 15.2, 15.3, is that right, Jim? Cost per student at your end is about 15.3?
It's difficult for us to get to that number because we...
A 6 through 12.
Because we're a 6 through 12 school, and it's really hard to sometimes pull apart. Exactly. I know the rate that is quoted by the Department of Education, 2012.
16.2.
And I asked that question in the context of, will your town pass the budget that will allow you to offer that cost pricing to Dern? If we go through this whole procedure, is there that possibility that your town will vote down your budget?
Yeah, sure.
In New Market, you may recall last March, we voted on a non-binding referendum that said, "You wish us to continue talking with Oyster River?" And it said, about 90% said, "Yes, absolutely." But you have to remember, at that time, we had no information regarding costs. And in New Market, cost is everything to them. And although they certainly want a quality education for their kids, this is the primary decision point, I believe. So tomorrow night at my board meeting, I'll be presenting a cost analysis that encompasses this, plus, as you're doing, other options that we have. So it's hard to gauge how the community will react. I can tell you that in total, it's a very expensive proposition, more so than I think people are expecting, and that's about all I'll say to that. So we, as you, will do sometime in September, start having some public hearings, and that's when we'll really get some good feedback from the community.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over and come back with my other questions so I don't dominate.
Don't go too far away. My question might seem a little indelicate, and I don't mean it to be indelicate. You presented a slide that showed that your free and reduced lunch numbers are very high, and ours are very low. And with free and reduced lunch, when you reach a certain threshold, you get state funds.
Federal funds.
Federal funds.
Federal funds, yes.
My question is, would that money be on the front end or the back end? Would that reduce the amount you would pay us because the state would be paying a portion? Or would it come to us after you would pay whatever magic number we determine is the per-student cost?
Right. For free and reduced lunch, you're talking about Title I funding.
Yes, sir.
Our elementary school is a Title I school. I don't know, but I don't believe any of yours. You probably get some Title I funds, but not anyways near what we get. The determiner for the amount that we get, even though it goes to our elementary school, is the total district count of free and reduced lunch, total number of students. I don't remember the district count, but I do remember the high school count. We have 59 high school students for next year on free and reduced lunch. And so that would mean those students come off of our district count. They come over to your count if they're in a tuition arrangement. And so that may mean some more money for you, but still not qualify you to be a Title I school, I would bet, because they're all, you just probably won't reach that threshold. But for us, it will diminish the total district amount of students and thus diminish our amount of Title I funds. So that will impact what we do. It'll, although I haven't put it in the cost analysis for hard numbers for the district because it's hard to predict, but because they provide such really essential services at the elementary school, it will likely mean a shift from federal funding to district funding.
And no money would, in relation to the title accounts, come from New Market to us. It would be, in fact, what it would do is probably firm up our numbers because we're always on that place where we might not get anything. So having New Market youngsters at the high school would solidify our base in terms of Title I, but no money would transfer in relation to the federal money between the two systems. Other questions that I can answer?
Oh, sorry. All right. We're back through the slides here. The 125 number that Barrington gave you, that is what they would talk as an upper threshold today?
Yes.
And that's, and they don't know because they don't know their choice, what parents would necessarily choose, per se?
Correct. It's the most kids that could come from Barrington based on that conversation that we had most recently with them.
But that number, in my opinion, is not static. I mean, it could change, you know? What does their long-range plan say in terms of student enrollment?
They're pretty flat.
They're flat or they decline?
But they don't see decrease. Yeah. Yeah. They're a growing community, but, you know, a growing community doesn't necessarily translate into more children. It just means more houses.
But the other factor, too, is that they have, you know, they're not going, parents may not, I don't know how they're going to work this out, but, you know, before, parents didn't have to pay to go to Dover. That is supposed to change, right?
You know, that's the part of the equation that we don't know what's going on with them and Dover. All we can do is base it on what they're doing currently.
Okay. Well, I...
I know that Dover has expressed interest in a higher tuition rate, but, you know, it doesn't play into this spreadsheet, this poll.
I mean, you can't, I mean, I understand why you did what you did, but it's, I feel just historically, it's grown, almost doubled. You're, you know, it's grown very rapidly, the rapid rate.
Right.
The number of students coming from there. Okay. Then my question is on the do-nothing slides on 32, close the middle school. Do we have an idea how much that property is worth? And if we were to close, I'm assuming, would we sell the property? What would we do?
Well, I think that would be a big discussion for the board. You know, there's been, as I've talked about this particular option internally, you know, Sue and I have talked about it, and principal and I have talked about it. Does it make sense to sell the building? Initially, that was my reaction, and then they were talking about different uses for the building, you know, charter school. To keep the building in our assets and keep it at a minimal level in order to maintain it as a just-in-case facility in case the long-range numbers are wrong, you know, so that's a big discussion in front of us. But we haven't done market value on it.
Yeah. Because, I mean, that's one way to fund some, you know...
Well, that was my initial reaction. If we sold the building, then we could use the revenue from that to do the capital improvements at the elementaries and here.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to skip around. If you go back to the slide where you talk about academic needs of students, slide number 13, you talked about adding in world language, English, math, math lab. Are those just examples?
No. Todd and Chris, the two principals from the two buildings, actually went through and analyzed their needs related to the increased student population. So in the core areas, it came out to be approximately two people per core area, two English, two math, that kind of thing.
Not, not science, not...
Yep, science and math and...
Because it's not...
I didn't, that's not comprehensive. That's just to give you a sense.
Okay. Okay. I just wasn't sure if that was...
It's the idea of...
I was thinking, why not science? Why not music?
They're all there.
Why not everything else?
Yeah. It's not intended to be comprehensive because I would have to add another 30 slides.
Okay. Then my other question is about comparing the academics. I'd like to know what the SAT scores were and are comparatively against New Market versus Oyster River. And I also want to know the information about AP exams, how many taken and the scores.
Mm-hmm.
If I could book enough by individual student...
Okay, chase after that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's interesting, and, wow, I read the newspaper, so I know where kids are going to college, so I know that. And then, my question is, if we do nothing, if we decided just, you know, shrink down, or let's roll the dice and see what happens, you know, do we need to, if that was a decision this board made, do we need to go to the polls on that decision?
I don't know what the process is, it depends on whether you decide to close the middle school. So I would have to investigate that with legal counsel in the process.
But that decision probably wouldn't happen, I mean, that would be foolish to make that decision. We don't need to close the middle school today, I mean...
Oh, right, no, this is...
Right, that would be a future board's issue.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're talking probably four, five years out before you'd have that conversation.
Okay, well, one more thing. The 36 staff positions that could be eliminated, would those be, where would those come from across?
Across the entire spectrum, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Ken?
Jump back in, I'm sorry. Slide 28, where we talk about projected size, and capacity study is 915, max, with our current desired classroom size. And it seems like some of those years did really push up against it.
Yeah, just that.
I guess I'd really like to know what a school would feel like to be right up against...
We actually have done that work. Again, Todd Allen and Chris, the high school principals, have looked at high-performing high schools in the state of New Hampshire that hover in those numbers, and so the structures for each of them would be different, but the, they're very, they can be just as successful as a school we have now, I guess is what I'm saying. We have done that work.
Slide 30, where you give the tax, what the Newmarket option would reduce the tax effort by, could you maybe give us in those same terms what the other options would also, in that same exact language?
We'd be glad to.
That would be just a real linear comparison.
Yeah, I can put them in the same slide, maybe that would be helpful. It's a matrix.
Tying into what Megan was talking about, two points. One, I don't feel we measure our school by kneecaps, and I don't think that most of the educators would feel that. And so I think that the SAT idea is good, and that certainly would include percentage of students that are taking the SATs. And the other thing is, and you mentioned reading in the newspaper where kids go to school, really more important, I think, is where kids were accepted, because a lot of times, because of financial reasons, kids are going to UNH, and they've been accepted. So that's, I think...
So are you, may I say, can we get that information? Can we get the college accept, I was trying not to be too...
Oh, no, that's all, I mean, we're all very proud of our college acceptance rates, and theirs is, I think it was like 76 or 78%, so, yeah.
Not the rate, where they got, which institutions they were accepted to, and also National Merit Scholar.
I assume their guidance department does the same thing we do.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, too.
And then, slide 53, the Oyster River High School staff survey, I'd love to see that survey.
See it.
See it, and the way the question was worded, the way the people answered it. And Peter, I'm wondering if students have done a survey? Peter, have students done a survey at all?
Just on tuitioning as a whole?
Okay, but not just breakdown?
Oh, no, we, we have not.
Okay.
I can look into that, though.
Sorry, I'm bored here.
No problem.
No, no, no.
Other questions? Okay, Jim, why don't you take over?
What, what we have provided for you this evening is a booklet of about 21 pages long. The intention is to give a very full and complete description of the components that we have discussed over the last 11, 10, 11 months, into what we believe is a, is a comprehensive tuition agreement. And, and so the document that I've provided gives a lot of historical background and other information that we relied on as we processed decisions. And then, and then a lot of it was shaped by different elements of this, our discussion was shaped by different elements of the, of the tuition agreement. Now, up here, I've presented the, the people who are involved in these meetings throughout. I will tell you, I felt our meetings were terrific, just really everybody student-centered, looking out for the best interests of everyone. I think our schools are comparable in terms of very high expectations for performance and always striving to be better, and, but it was really a focus on students and quality education, and not, not other topics taking hold. Again, we had regular meetings since October 2012, and I spoke about this common fate focus. One thing that, that you've already noted is that the pro, the enrollment, the total projected enrollment doesn't exceed your board policy of 915. We work to assure that current programs and class sizes were being maintained, and yet we spent a lot of time talking about value-added, and I know Dr. Morse has spoken to that tonight. We also spoke about the transition of Newmarket students to, to this school, and did it, I think, very thoughtfully. It was on our agenda many times, and, and really struggled. It was probably the most difficult part of our discussions, and you'll see in a moment where we ended up. All of our, all of our discussions weren't just the people that I listed on the slide, we involved from both districts, business administrators, curriculum coordinators, special ed directors. Transition teams were set up at both high schools, and at schools, there were meetings with staff and students, and we had public meetings, and, and in the end, we involved attorneys for both, for both school districts. The key piece for you, I'm sure, and for us in, in Newmarket as well, would be the total enrollments. And although this is a little bit different-looking than what Dr. Morse had just presented to you, in that, in that it was my understanding that beginning in the year that we start, 2015, 16, simultaneously Barrington would be phasing out. And so what you see in this slide are the enrollment projections for your school, our school, and then a phasing out over three years of Barrington students. So, so in the early years, it does show higher numbers than what were presented there. But it does, as you pointed out, push up against the, the 900 to some extent. But it's really key in understanding this, it's going to be very key for my Newmarket residents to understand this, because when you're paying tuition per student, enrollment means a great deal. The contents of the suggested structure are these. I don't intend to go through them one at a time, you won't see 70 slides, but I did group them and grab the real essentials in, in, I think, a cohesive way, so we'll, we'll go through them. But you can see, it goes all the way from terms of the agreement to curriculum coordination, State Board of Education approval, and a lot of the financial steps as well. The terms of the agreement. All Newmarket students in grades nine through 12 will attend Oyster River High School beginning in 2015, 16. We would transition all students in the same year. We talked about other means of doing that, phasing it in over one, or two or three years, but the decision in the end was, they should all move at the same time. No new Barrington students, as I mentioned, would be attending as of 2015, 16, that's new students. The initial term would be for 15 years, so it would extend through June 30th of 2030. The renewal cycle, it would be extended by eight years unless either party notifies the other in writing prior to March 30th of 2025. It was essential to Newmarket, where we'd in effect be closing a school, that we receive five years' notice, minimum, if, if a tuition agreement's going to come to an end. We need time to plan. And so, and so with a five-year notice inside that 15-year span, if we don't hear within that, prior to that March 30th, then the contract gets extended for eight years. And thenceforward, extensions will be eight-year extensions, and again, the five-year notice of, of renewal or termination. If the tuition agreement concludes in any particular year defined by what I just said, then students currently going to school there would be allowed to phase out, would, would still continue for the succeeding years of their high school career, no new students, as I just mentioned, for Barrington. The tuition calculation, it's based on your projected cost per pupil, as calculated using the projected enrollments and the adopted budget for the ensuing school year. So that means where we started, and Jim said it too, where we started was with the 2013, 2014 Oyster River High School budget. And then, and then, as you see in this second bullet here, there are items that are not part of the calculation, both on your side and on our side. So from your costs, were, were withdrawn, costs for transportation, debt service, non-instructional services, food service expenses, special fund expenses, and then supplemental costs for special education, which are primarily out-of-district placements, both tuitions and, and transportation. And so, we pay those amounts separately, outside of tuition, and so the amount that comes, the projected budget for this school next year, those amounts are deducted as well, so we've got an apples-to-apples comparison. But new staff would have to be hired if 250 to 280, 90 students arrive on your doorstep. Our school principals got together and, and took your schedule and overlaid our students and their select, their course selections on top of yours, to figure out what would be the total number of students taking certain math courses and English and so forth. Then, then what they needed to do was to determine, okay, how many teachers do we need in order to achieve the class-size goals that you've set for yourself? We have the same set class-size goals, we, we hold up, hold on to them as dearly as you do, so that was very important to us. And so what you see here are the number of additional staff that would be required if Newmarket students came here. 11 teachers, one guidance counselor, four sped case managers, a part-time speech therapist, a nurse assistant, 11 paraprofessionals. Athletics would be expanded somewhat, and that's in the report, I don't touch on that tonight. CTE, Career and Technical Education, is included. Newmarket next year will be sending 61 students to the Seaco School of Technology, and then an amount there for unanticipated expenses, so that the additional expense for Newmarket coming here would be $2.475 million. So, the bottom table here is, now we take your cost next year, less those items that are, are withdrawn, add the cost for Newmarket coming here, and then get the total tuition expense as a combined school, and it's just over $14 million. And again, this would be if it were happening next year. But it isn't happening next year, and we need to project out over as many years as we can, and so we have projected out, all the way out to 2022, 23, which is as far as our enrollment projections go. And, and what Oyster River did is take a look back at the last five years, growth of your budget has, has been roughly 2% a year, and so we use that as the growth factor projecting forward, 2% growth. And you get this table here, which is a composite. It shows the combined enrollment, shows the 2% annual expense growth, shows, well, again, now, now we're 2015, 16, we're two years ahead of next year, and so it's grown by 2% to get to that number. So now we've got the Oyster River number, what Newmarket cost going up 2% would be, and then what the total is, and now you see it's gone from 14 to $14.6 million in 2015, 16. When you divide by the student population, you get the tuition rate. And so all the way out there, you see some projected tuition rates. It ranges from the $16,300 to just over $20,000 in that, what, eight-year period. That's regular education, but it's also special education in many respects. You saw I built in sped case managers and paraprofessionals and one-to-ones and all of that. So all of the special ed programming is included in that tuition number. The only thing that isn't are these special education expenses that are outside of it, and again, primarily what they are, out-of-district placements and tuitions. Although you see the definition here, that's in the, in the tuition agreement language. It's not limited to special equipment, outside evaluations of services, special programs, out-of-district placements, or the cost of due process appeals, it's our responsibility. Catastrophic aid or other aid will be credited to the students' district of residence. Newmarket will have access to service logs and other documentation regarding Medicaid reimbursements. The decision as to whether a Newmarket student's needs can be met within the Oyster River School District rests with the students' IEP team. That is the final decision. We will always have a, a district administrator, and I fully expect it'll be our special education director who'll be at the IEP meetings, who's certainly going to express her opinions, and, and hopefully, 99% of the time, we're in agreement. But if there is disagreement, it is the IEP team that rules the day, and if the decision of that team is an out-of-district placement, then it's Newmarket's responsibility to find a suitable replacement and then pay the bill. We have projected out our, our special education costs for next year for our high school, for out-of-district placements. You see the number here. Again, it's mostly tuitions and transportations. We put in $75,000 for unanticipated issues, because these are real kids and real payments next year. And so the estimated cost in Newmarket is just over $504,000, and that's 2013, 14. So we now project that forward, because we're building up our, what is the total cost to Newmarket, it's not just tuition. We project this forward at 3%. That's been our experience with special education, and I would imagine it's not a whole lot different for you. So we have those costs moving forward. Other financial aspects, capital costs are included in the base tuition rate, and capital costs are fixed, they're not, again, it's not your debt service, you saw earlier, we talked about taking debt service out, but they're fixed one-time expenses for the purchase of land or buildings, construction, equipment, and so forth. But it, since the addition renovation of this building was completed in 2004, it's really not anticipated that there'll be significant capital projects in the foreseeable future. And Newmarket will have access to all necessary financial records. I'm going to go on for a second, but I might come back. Yeah, let me come back. One other one that I didn't put on here, but I need to mention, is student transportation. We are responsible for student transportation. The, the only exception to that that is listed in the tuition agreement is the, and Dr. Morse had mentioned, using our athletic fields, which generally are behind our junior, senior high school, that if, if transportation is required to take teams over there and bring them back, then that's the responsibility of your, your school and your athletic program. Tuition notification, how does that, how does that work? We obviously both need to plan budgets and then pay bills. So first of all, by November 1st, you would notify us of a preliminary written estimate of tuition. Then by December 15th, no later than that, you would notify us of a guaranteed maximum... you would notify us of a guaranteed maximum tuition rate. And then, by April 15th, obviously, we're done with our district meetings and we'll know what will be the final tuition rate for the ensuing year. The last piece here, any action by the legislature that impacts the budget will allow you to the option of adjusting tuition. I mean, we all lived through the retirement problem. And so, if that's the kind of thing we were thinking of. How do payments get made? You set the tuition rate, again, by April 15th. So then, on October 1st, as we all do, we look closely at our October 1st enrollments. We take our October 1st enrollment, and this is an example that would be included in the body of the agreement, so everybody knows how this really works. The first semester bill is take the tuition rate, multiply by the number of students, and divide by two, because we're breaking out payments in semesters. And as you see in this example, that results to just under $2.1 million. Then, prepping for a billing in, for second semester, January 20th was the date that we picked. We'd again assess what is the net enrollment of Newmarket students at that point. In this example, it's 256 students. And so, we'd multiply, again, the tuition times the 256, and then subtract out what was paid in the first semester. We also then do a catch-up for students that came in after October 1st. So we calculate a per diem tuition rate. We multiply by the number of days for those students in that interim period. In this example, it was, let's say it's 200 days. Then, 200 times $90 a day is your $18,000 figure. So that the total, second semester bill is the tuition that I mentioned, plus this catch-up piece, this adjustment. And then, lastly, once the school year has completed, but we haven't closed our books on that fiscal year, we will again do a similar kind of, take a look back at who moved in and out and what, how many hours might, not hours, but how many school days might that be, again, multiplied by the daily rate, and get a final adjustment, so that all the expenses for tuition are handled within the same fiscal year. Couple other student count things that we're both in agreement with. We do the same thing. Dual enrollment, and the best example is a homeschool student. You have a homeschool student you might allow to come to Oyster River High School and take a class, no different if we had a homeschool student in Newmarket. And so, we would just prorate the tuition piece for whatever course that they are taking. And the second piece is foreign exchange students. We value that experience as well. The agreement would say that Newmarket would be allowed one foreign exchange student at no tuition cost per year. I mentioned earlier, Career and Technical Education is very important in the education of our students. We generally send 50 to 60 students a year to SST in Exeter. And so, what we did is we took the matrix of what our kids are taking next year, both the first year and second-year students, and then matched it against Dover and Somersworth to make sure that the kinds of interests our kids are expressing are filled. And obviously, you can see from this chart that they are. But this did want us to make sure that we had language in the agreement that addressed Career and Technical Education. So, students are permitted to enroll without limitation, assuming they're accepted. Cost tuition fees, transportation, they're all included in that tuition rate, except for any costs that are not included in this particular paragraph for right now, then Newmarket would be responsible for. And the best example I have is that we pay an additional fee at SST for special needs students. Dover doesn't charge that, Somersworth doesn't, I don't believe Rochester does. It's, each school gets to set their own rate structure. School board involvement. Would call for joint school board meetings at least two times per year. Would have Newmarket have a non-voting representative to meetings, to your regular board meetings, to be able to participate in issues related to the high school and to the tuition agreement. Except for non-public sessions, we would have an alternate so that we'd be sure that there's representation here. Newmarket citizens would be able to come to meetings and speak during your public comment time to anything that pertains to our arrangement. And there's an interest in Newmarket to consider being part of the Cooperative School District. And so, there's language in here that says, in the fifth year of this agreement, 2019-20, a joint committee would be formed to consider whether Newmarket would do that. Lastly, no, not lastly, Program Standards and Student Affairs. Oyster River has to provide a course of studies that is, that both meets DOE approval standards, NASC standards, and if you don't go by NSC, then some other organization that holds high standards and high expectations for comprehensive high schools. Newmarket will be provided with all of the proper student records on any student that we send here. And all Newmarket students are subject to the rules that you set for discipline. It's really important that our students be prepared for their entry into your school. So curriculum coordination at the middle school level is important. We're encouraging that. Professional development, common professional development opportunities, we think make a great deal of sense. And so, we're encouraging that. Coordination of our calendars makes a great deal of sense, certainly for our families and our programs. So, those are the kinds of things that we would seek. Lastly, this is the last piece, the contract approval. Contract's only binding once Newmarket votes it at an annual meeting. You voted at an annual meeting. And then, it has to be approved by the State Board of Education. And the other things are just contractual language. If something's found to be invalid, well, the rest of it still is valid. And there's a process defined in here as well for contract disputes, with the first level being the superintendents, the second level being you folks, the third level being State Board of Education, and after that, some particular appropriate court could solve the dispute, I suppose. And that's as far as we've gotten. I think we felt we did a real comprehensive job. I think it's a good framework for discussions. Obviously, it's a suggested structure. It's not a negotiated agreement. But I think it touches on all of the right things that we should consider in a tuition agreement. So, happy to answer any questions.
Would you please define what non-instructional services are?
I can rely on Sue, because I know, she would know what she took out. But for me, non-instructional would be things like insurances. Yeah, you know how we, in the...
States report.
Yeah, what do you put down as non-instructional?
It's on page eight of this document.
Right, services that have no relationship to instruction.
Anything dealing with operations, non-instructional.
And do you have an average per student special education cost?
No, we don't.
You don't, from year to year, you haven't had a floating average of...
We don't calculate that, so I don't have one that comes to mind, no.
So, the $500,000 that you stated, is that a pretty solid number that you've experienced over the course of time, or...
Pretty solid. I think we've seen some influx in our elementary, not elementary, in our middle school numbers this year. But yes, we're pretty confident that's a good number to project forward with.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a couple just general questions. I'm kind of curious. So, if you were to, you know, come to Oyster River, you still need to address your junior high school situation?
Yes.
What is, I'm just, what are you gonna do with that?
It's a great question.
What do you think?
Well, here's what I can tell you.
Okay.
One of the things that we did, which has driven up our costs, is we took next year's junior, senior high school budget and said, okay, what do we pull out of here so that what we're left with purely is what we need for grades six through eight? When we did that, and the board did that last spring and approved a middle school-only budget for planning purposes, the drop was not as significant as you might guess. In fact, the budget for a middle school-only was 60% of the junior, senior high cost. So it's more, and the fact is that it's more expensive to have schools separate and combined. And so, we have a larger cost that's driven by that. The board also, at that time, approved a couple things that they have directed me to pursue. They directed me to work with our architects to develop a schematic design and cost estimate for a middle school to be built on property across the street from the high school. They also considered the impact, and it's a positive impact, if we move fifth grade to the middle school, make it a 5'8" middle school, and build a 5'8" middle school. And so, that was the decision they've asked me to pursue. I don't have data on that. We're still working with architects on that. There's another line of thinking as well, though, that says, fix the fire and life safety in that building, and that that be the end of how far we go. Don't build a new school. So, there are different options out there for us to look at.
My other question is, I have several questions. Have you, this is, have you spoken to other districts other than Oyster River about sending kids to their high schools, like Exeter, Cooperative?
In 2010, we approached, I think, seven or eight different school districts, including yourselves. And in the end, the only one who was interested in a long-term arrangement was Epping. And we had discussions similar to what we've had here with Epping, until we reached a point where they said, look, we're gonna put this on our ballot and have a non-binding referendum from the public and see what they think. And Epping voters pretty strongly rejected doing any tuition arrangement with Newmarket. So that left us without any circumstance of partnering at all with any neighbor. And so, we, you know, jumped in full bore on designing a new school. And then, it was about a year ago when, well, more than a year ago, when Leon Leveque and I started having some conversations and led to this.
So then, I have specific questions related to your presentation, which was excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Table number three on page eight, you talk about, you did this overlay looking at professional staff and different costs. You know, I'm not sure, because I don't know, what, you know, for example, what is the ratio of student to guidance counselor in your high school, and how is it compared to Oyster River? And also, special ed case load ratios? I'm wondering if that, we could see those comparisons? If we may have a different ratio than what you, you know, I wanna see what you guys...
For guidance counselors.
I was thinking specifically some of the, well, I was gonna ask about your student-teacher ratio and your classroom size policy for your district compared to Oyster River.
It's almost identical to what you do, I can tell you that.
Okay, and then the guidance and the sped.
And guidance, we have a guidance counselor slash director who does the high school. And then, we have a guidance counselor for middle school. So high school's pretty easy, about 240, 250 to one.
What's our ratio?
About the same.
And middle school, I think the middle school is almost, almost that. It's maybe a little bit less, maybe 230 students, so 230 to one.
I just wanted to be crystal clear. Your proposal does not require our busing the students to Oyster River High School?
Correct.
That's right, that's right.
And, oh, when you spoke about the tech ed and the, that the fact that the students from Newmarket would have, the state would require they're going to the facilities at either Dover or Somersworth, are we, are they able to support this influx potential?
Yes, I contacted both superintendents.
Oh, well, this is kind of a question. On page 18, you have some school profile information. And I'm just curious about, I don't know how to read this. At the bottom left, it talks about four-year college acceptance, Oyster River 69%, Newmarket 48.4%. That's...
The principals put all this data together.
Okay, what about, Oyster River, it says calculus AB 100%, calculus BC 100%, statistics 100%. I know that doesn't mean every single kid in Oyster River takes those classes. So, what does that mean?
It means that they took the AP test and they all scored.
Oh, that's AP exams. Well, what about other APs?
I'm gonna, you know, I don't really know. I don't know if you know.
Tom's not here.
I know. If I were to guess, I'd guess it's the number of students, three or better. But I don't know that.
Lastly, what world languages do you offer in your...
French and Spanish.
Jim?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Working with you and Cliff, it was a real pleasure. I really admired the way you approached this. It was a constructive committee, and you guys are great. I have a question on table five.
What page is that?
It's on page nine. If you look at like 2017, you have a total combined enrollment of like 905. See that? It's by the third.
Yes.
And then, it goes dramatically down by about 70. But there's no savings involved in that decline. Is that because you don't imagine there will be savings?
Now, let me make sure I got the right years here. It's 905. Oh, and then, over the...
Over then, over the next several years, it goes down to 836. Can you see?
Yes.
Okay, but there's no, you know, so you have a decline of almost 70 students, but there's no savings. You know, is that because you don't anticipate there'd be any savings?
No, it's a calculation of tuition times number of students. The best way I can describe it is, as you know, we projected a 2% increase over the years. If our enrollments stayed exactly the same, our costs would go up 2%, your costs go up 2%, we're all going away happy. But the reality is that your enrollment goes down, so your costs shift downward. Our enrollment goes up. So you're looking at total, total numbers. But Newmarket needs to look at its enrollment. And so, ours shift upward. And that's what drives up our costs, shifting higher than that 2%. Okay? And that's why, you know, for example, in, let's see, if I can find it here. 2017-18 takes a huge leap up for Newmarket. What happens there are a couple things. One is, the Barrington enrollment increases the total, so it drives down the tuition rate. And so, that drives down Newmarket's cost as well. But then, as they leave and we go up, there's a dramatic uptick in our enrollments. And so, that's what drives the big cost increase. It's all about what happens with our enrollment in relationship to the total enrollment. So as the total enrollment stays, where is it here? You know, it stays the same going into that year. It's really 901 to 905 students. But our enrollment goes up from 248 to 271, you know? And then, the next year jumps up to 282, while yours goes down. So again, that moderates your cost and increases our cost.
Well, maybe, I'll phrase it another, and maybe it's just too late in the night for me to understand. I don't understand why with, you know, in the last part of these years, the tuition expense at Oyster River would continue to go up at this 2% rate when the student population at Oyster River declines so dramatically. It seemed to me that that would moderate the, or maybe even lower the cost because you're gonna have so many fewer students at Oyster River. Do you understand my question?
I do. It's a conversation, actually, that Jim and I and Sue have been having for a couple weeks as we've been talking about this very same issue. And so, the fundamental part of your question, Tom, is wouldn't there be even, you know, this is a model that shows flat growth at nearly 3% in Newmarket. this is a model that shows flat growth at nearly 3% in New Market and 2% of Oyster River. It's, it's not a, it's not a surgical model the further it gets out. Just like Long Range Planning Committee, the margin of error increases dramatically the further you go out in time. These tables in the immediate future are relatively accurate, but don't reflect decisions of both boards or superintendent recommendations the further they go out. It assumes everything is static, but the reality is that everything isn't static and decisions would be made. So in terms of the model, it's, the model is correct, but what it doesn't include is decisions by boards relative to staffing and other costs.
Let me, let me try and say it in a different way, too, from my perspective, because I do truly believe it's about our enrollment versus the total. We're trending generally upward, you're trending the other direction. Let's take it to the absurd. The absurd would be if we reach a point where we have the same number of students as you. If we have the same number of students with you under this model, we're paying half the cost of the school. Right? And so that's what drives our costs. Okay? Yeah.
Two questions. One, there's, in the model of your students coming here, we'll be adding faculty, and you're losing faculty. Have there been any discussions about that process?
There's nothing in the tuition agreement, and, but there has been certainly discussions around that. And what we have both said many times over, Dr. Morse and I, is that any openings that you have, any staff that lose their positions at New Market High School would at least have an interview. They're not guaranteed any positions, but at least the ability to come in and interview with your, your people. So I think that, to me, that's number one, and I think that's a terrific opportunity, at least for them to, to speak with you. The other thing that, that I think we acknowledge, and it's going to be within your decision-making, is there is a benefit. If you, if we're bringing 250 kids here, there is a benefit for having some staff in this building that kids associate with from the past. And so where you can find staff that you're comfortable with, according to how you would want to hire staff, I would encourage you to hire New Market teachers. Okay?
The second question, and it, I'm sorry, it kind of gets back to the budget question I was asking, and I'm very sympathetic to people in New Market and the tax rate that they're paying, but kind of talking from the perspective of Oyster River, maybe a little frightened going down a far path and then having New Market reject a budget. If I'm clear, the agreement, you'll pay the transportation costs, you'll pay the same price per student that ours is, plus you're dealing with the whole issue of your middle school and that tremendous cost. In my mind, that seems like that's going to be a tremendous tax burden on your community. And do you realistically feel that that's all going to go through? And I don't mean that in a.
No, I, I understand.
I mean it as, as where in our position.
You know, you know, as we put together the elements of this agreement, they all made sense. And yet, when you put the whole package together financially and add on top of it the increased cost for six to eight that I didn't anticipate, it is a very expensive proposition as it stands right now. Now, I know, you know, you mentioned that, that it's not, it's not over. There may still be more talks around it, but right now, I'd say it's, it's, it's a very difficult, very difficult to believe that the voters would support at this point the financial impact of this.
And maybe to follow that up, and to have an honest conversation, your school, the physical plan deteriorated to the point that now it's not sustainable.
Right.
Did that happen through neglect, or did that happen through non-support by voters on the school budget and you not being able to get the funding to support the building?
I don't think it was neglect. I wouldn't characterize it as that. I think it's, it's an old building, you know? 1922, I think they started and opened in '24. But I would say that along the way, improvements to the building were not good quality improvements. And, and so we were left with a building that doesn't work well, and the systems are failing. And example, what we're working on this summer, we have a former gym that was renovated into a library on the first floor and, and classroom science labs on the second floor. The means of egress from there, they might have been code compliant back then, but they're not now, and that's costing us roughly $640,000 just to fix that. So it's, so it's a building that what has evolved over the years is no longer, really supports education, but certainly doesn't meet fire and life safety codes and has degrading systems beyond fire and life safety that have just outlived their useful life.
I'm curious how New Market, you, the sense is, you know, with, one of the things that we talked about here at Oyster River was expanding the popular, the school population increases opportunities for the students. And is that something that's also a very big plus for New Market? I mean, are they weighing that considerably into this is going to go, New Market High School is going to go from a school of 200-plus to now to 900, 800?
I think there are people that do see the opportunities, but there are also people who value the small school. You know, we in education see research about small school design, and it's living and breathing in New Market, and so it's, it's really working extremely well. But, but I think people do see the increased opportunities. I think they're attracted to your, your programs, be it co-curricular or academic. Certainly, a new facility is something that they would welcome. So it's going to be interesting to see. You know, it really, I think what, you know, what has been my goal all along is to present the voters of New Market with their best options and then let them choose. And clearly, there are many people who see this as the best option. Yeah. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So just to let the board know, tomorrow night, I'll be hanging out with Jim and his board meeting. Though I don't think I'll do my slideshow for them.
A bridge version.
I would suggest at this point, I do the right to know presentation and then reschedule the rest of the.
I need to talk to you about enrollment.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Thank you.
No, I need to ask the board for permission.
Okay. Let's have a five-minute recess. I don't know.
All right.
Okay. We've been talking about this night, it's a very long agenda. And my suggestion is that we move the right to know presentation to right now. We do the enrollment update, and then we reschedule the rest of the agenda. Tom will not be here on the 28th. And since we're talking about the, we could have the, the, the negotiations on the 4th.
Mm-hmm. We could do that, right? Yeah. Okay.
The negotiation, the non-meeting, you mean?
The non-meeting.
The non-meeting on the 4th.
The negotiation, because we don't give us time to.
And can everybody else be here at 7:00 on the 28th?
I cannot.
Is that the non-meeting?
No.
To do the rest of the agenda.
I will be here.
Budget calls.
So Megan can't be, anybody else? What is it, like?
What, didn't you say Tom?
Like.
Tom will be here, so that's two.
You have a choice, or it's manifest anyway.
So let's do, do the rest of the agenda.
On the 4th?
On the 4th.
Okay.
So not the 28th?
Not the 28th, we'll do it the 4th.
So the 28th, we'll be, we'll be.
Will be a manifest.
Yeah, the manifest meeting that was already scheduled.
And, and he will sit in for Tom. Okay, thank you.
He's paying. Oh, wait, the 28th. I'll be here. Sorry. The first day of school, right?
School starts that.
Oh, yeah. What am I thinking? I'm sorry, I'll be here. Yeah, I'm here.
Keep it on the 4th.
We'll keep it on the 4th. Make sure it's here.
I'm here on the 28th. Do I need to come on the 28th?
Um, not, not.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Superintendent, carry on.
Okay. So with the board's permission, moving the right to know presentation up, I've invited Diane Goro, who's our, who is our attorney, and she has been giving me really good advice since I've been here as superintendent, and I'm pleased to invite her to the podium to do her presentation on the right to know.
I had sent Wendy some information that I was going to discuss. If no, if you don't have that, I have some packets here for anyone who don't.
Do you have?
What?
Do you have the packet?
I got it on.
That's great, yeah. But this is what we have to print out on our printer.
I just, as you all know, the right to know law really deals with two issues, governmental records in meetings and sets the, the rules that govern all public bodies in the state on those two items. I thought what I would just concentrate on tonight was the meeting aspect of the right to know law. And also talk about, do you have any, I have more if you.
I think we're all.
We have, I have it electronically.
I have one, Diane. So I have it for those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
And we just talk about the requirements for meetings and the limitations on the board's communications outside of meetings. And what I have in the materials here are just some of the applicable provisions of the RSAs. And I also wanted to kind of talk about the three decisions that were issued by the court for the Oyster River right to know law cases and just kind of remind the board of what the decision state and what the injunction part of the decision mean to the board. So most of what's in here are the three cases. You know, in order to understand the requirements of, the meeting requirements of the right to know law, you first have to understand how school boards and other public bodies act. You only have authority when you're at a meeting like this duly posted under the right to know law and you act as a whole. Outside of the meeting, individual board members have no authority to act on the board except if at one of these duly posted meetings, the board authorizes you to act. And I think when we talk about some of the aspects of the cases, that's important to remember that if the board as a whole at a duly posted meeting votes to give authority to one or two of you to act outside of a meeting, then your actions outside of the meeting will be in accordance with the right to know law. But if you don't have that authority from the board and the decision isn't made here at the board to give you that authority, your actions, your decisions, your discussions on behalf of the district outside of the meeting are more than likely going to violate the right to know law. So what I wanted to just bring you in, or remind everyone, and I think it's, it's pretty obvious, but the whole purpose of the right to know law, and it's right in the preamble, it's to give the public full view of the board's decisions, discussions, and actions in that the public has the greatest possible access to the actions and discussions of public bodies. Obviously, there are certain limited instances where the board can go into non-public session. And I could just kind of direct you to the materials. On page one, what I have is, I've just included the definition section of the RSA 91 hyphen A colon 1A, which has the definitions. You know, I think we're all familiar with the fact that the right to know law applies to public bodies. Public bodies includes subcommittees of the board, advisory committees, and on page one, we have the definition of what an advisory committee is. Page three, and I think this is really one of the key provisions for our discussion tonight, is what a definition of a meeting is under the right to know law. That, there's really two key aspects of the meeting definition. One, it's a quorum of the public body, and the public body could be the school board, it could be an advisory committee of the school board, it could be a subcommittee of the school board. And the other key component of what a meeting is, is it's for the purpose to discuss or act upon matters over which the public body has supervision, control, custody, jurisdiction, or advisory authority. So generally, in, if you look in the definition, it doesn't matter whether the quorum is in person by means of telephone or electronic communication or in any other manner. When you have a quorum that's together in any method to discuss or act upon the matters of the school district, then you have a meeting. What's also important to understand is there are certain in the statute exceptions where things that would normally come within the definition of a meeting are explicitly excluded by the legislature. And those are on page three as well. And that's strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining, that's not a meeting. You're obviously going to meet the quorum requirements, you're going to meet the discussion of the action of the, of the meeting, but it's specifically exempted from the meeting requirements, which means you don't have to post a minute, you don't have to post those meetings, you don't have to take minutes of those meetings, and, you know, what you're discussing there doesn't have to be in the public. The other ones that are usually for boards like a school board, consultation with legal counsel, non-meeting, and also circulation of draft documents, which when finalized are intended only to formalize decisions previously made in a meeting. So that, in, I think the reason for that one is you've already made the decision at a duly posted meeting, and someone is basically authorized by the meeting to circulate drafts and to communicate. So that is also a non-meeting under the right to know law. There are also in the body of the first part, there's, there's a discussion about chance social or other encounters not convened for the purpose of discussing or acting upon such matters is not a meeting if no decisions are made. And this is one that, you know, that would be if you, you know, a couple of you, three of you happen to be at a sporting event, you're not there, you're not making decisions, that's a chance social gathering. Could be a student activity meeting at the store. This is one that came into play in some of the Oyster River decisions that are in, in this booklet, because you can't, if it's, it would be improper if it was official deliberations occurring in those gatherings, or you're making decisions during those gatherings, or you're doing that on a regular basis.
So Diane, may I ask you a question right there? So often, I'm asked by the board, you know, the state has a Christmas concert coming up, and there's anxiety about four of them being at a Christmas concert, because you specifically stopped at three, but four would create a quorum of this body. How, what's, what's the answer to that? I mean, if they want to go to a Christmas concert and the majority of them are there, but they're not sitting deliberating.
That should be fine, as long as you're not all sitting together, all talking about what you're going to do at the next school board meeting, then that would not be a meeting within the context of the right, of the right to know law. You know, in, in what I'm reading to you, the or is, that comes right from one of the Oyster River decisions where the court said, "This is not a chance gathering if these things are happening." And in that case, what you had was less than a quorum of the board, was meeting on a regular occasion in town discussing interim superintendent search, how to do it, how to. occasion in town, discussing interim superintendent search, how to do it, how to organize it, never a posted meeting. And in, in that case, what's interesting is, because we've just gone over, the definition of a meeting is a quorum of the board. There, it was less than a quorum, but it was clearly convened for the purposes of doing the district's business. And what the court said was, it was still a meeting regardless of whether the quorum requirement was met, because part of being less than a quorum was to avoid having the quorum requirement, but it was decisions being made about terms of a separation agreement, decisions being made about interviewing candidates for interim superintendent, all things which might, you could probably do in a non-public session of the board, but these were all occurring outside of the context of a duly posted meeting. Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question on that. So, if the board, that goes back to earlier on. So, if the board had said, "Okay, I'm going to take these three people, and they're going to be the interim, whatever, superintendent search party, and we give you the power to, like, organize it," would that have been legal?
If the board at a meeting voted and created a subcommittee of these individuals and gave them the authority to act out of the meeting, those individuals would have the authority to act. Their meetings might have had to have been posted under the right-to-know law. But this was gatherings without any vote of the whole board at a duly posted meeting authorizing any of it. And clearly, they were doing the business of the, of the district. And what's important to know about those, that case is, we're not just talking about a quorum of the board, it was less than a quorum, and what the court said was, regardless of whether a quorum exists, if you're out there, you know, it can't be a chance social gathering if you've planned where you're going to meet, you've met on many occasions, and you're discussing the business of the district. But I think the superintendent's example of, you're all going to a community event, as long as you're not going to that community event to circumvent the spirit and intent of the statute by going and having a meeting and, and, you know, speaking about things, that's fine. I mean, you're not prohibited from all being in the same location at the same time, what you're prohibited from being is doing the district's business when you're there, you know, deliberating, making decisions, or using that as a, as a method to circumvent the meeting requirements. So, yes.
So, could I have a pig roast, for instance, which is not a chance social event? I would invite people.
I think you could. I mean, I think you can have social gatherings, but you have to be careful that it doesn't involve discussing the business of the district, that you're not making decisions, you're not deliberating, and you're not using that to circumvent the, the, the meeting requirement. So, I mean, I, we've talked about what's not a meeting, consultation with legal counsel. There's a New Hampshire Supreme Court case that basically says that consultation means you, the attorney has to be there in some, some form. Either the attorney is on the phone, or the attorney is in person. If you're just talking about the attorney's letter and the attorney's not there, the court said that's really not consultation with legal counsel, because there's no one there you're consulting with. If all you're doing is going into a non-meeting to talk about an attorney's legal letter, that the court found that was inappropriate. But even when you have a non-meeting where you're consulting with legal counsel, either in person or a legal counsel is on the phone with you, you can't deliberate in that non-meeting and take action in that non-meeting. You'll have to do that at a duly posted meeting of the board. You know, and some of those actions probably would be non-public, you could do it in non-public session, they might not necessarily have to be in open. So, even though it's an exception from the meeting requirement, it is not an exception that allows you to deliberate and vote in that non-meeting. Similarly, to the collective bargaining, strategy and negotiation sessions, they are not meetings under the right-to-know law, but when it comes time when you have a negotiated agreement and the board, the whole board has to vote whether to accept that or approve that, that vote has to be done at a duly posted meeting. So, I mean, those exceptions are, they're kind of limited in what they allow you to do. In emails, that's where a lot of times boards get themselves into trouble with the meeting requirements. And it used to be, it wasn't clear what would be a governmental record if there were email exchanges between board members. I think everyone understands that emails to a quorum of the board would be a governmental record, that someone who makes a right-to-know law request would be entitled to receive that information, except if there was an exception or an exemption under the right-to-know law that applied. And what I wanted to talk to you about is, is on page five, under the right-to-know law, there's a specific provision that deals with communications by board members outside of meetings, and that's RSA 91 hyphen A colon 2 hyphen small a. And there's two parts of that. The first one makes it clear that boards shall deliberate on matters over which they have supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power, only in meetings held pursuant to the, those statutes that are cited, other notice provisions of the right-to-know law. So, if you're deliberating on a matter, you need to do that at a duly posted meeting. And the, the statute doesn't define what deliberate is, but I think we could all agree that means you're, you're discussing, you're weighing options, you're considering what to do. The second part of that statute is the one that's came into play in, in the Oyster River decisions, where communications outside of a meeting, including but not limited to sequential communications among members of a public body, cannot be used to circumvent the spirit and purpose of the statute. And the spirit and purpose of the statute is public access, public being able to watch how government is working, and to see the discussions and the deliberations. And when we, and I was talking earlier about the decision where it was less than a quorum meeting outside, the court said that violated the spirit and intent of the statute, that type of, of meeting. There was also in one of the cases, an issue where a board member had, in an email, specifically said that the, that the board member was sending the email in batches, so it wouldn't go to a quorum of the board. And the email was discussing the way the board member was going, a motion that the board member was going to propose, and how that board member was going to vote on the motion. And the court said that was a violation of the spirit and intent of the right-to-know law. It didn't go to a quorum of the board, and because we know that the definition of a meeting is a quorum, but it was done to circumvent the spirit of intent. It was discussing board action, it was discussion of motion, discussing how, how to vote. So, that was a violation.
Diane?
Yes?
That was a quorum. It was, because there were three people, plus her is four.
Right. But the, the idea of dividing it up to avoid that, the court had noted that that particular, it ended up going.
There were multiple, there were multiple.
Right.
Things at play with that particular instance.
Right.
Yeah.
But.
Interesting case.
But in, in specifically, the email itself said that it was being sent in batches to lessen a quorum.
Oh, yeah. I remember that email.
To avoid sending it. So, I think it ended up being circulated to a quorum. I was not the attorney in that case, so I don't, I don't know all of the facts, but my memory of it is, I think it ended up going to a quorum. But the specific language that I'm talking about is on page 34, and that's the decision from the 2011 case. And the 2011 case involved issues of emails, access to emails from a board member, the separation agreement with a former superintendent, and the interim superintendent search, and issues related to that. Now, I wanted to also include in the packet on page six, the remedy section of the right-to-know law, because there were amendments effective January 1 of this year, which added specific liability to public officers and employees of public bodies. If the court finds that an individual has acted in bad faith, the court in violating the right-to-know law, the court, and this is in Roman numeral four, can impose a civil penalty of not less than $250 and not more than $2,000 upon that individual. The court could also require the individual, if the school district or other public body is required to pay attorney's fees and costs of the person bringing the right-to-know law case, the court could order the individual employee or official to reimburse the school district or the public body that's had to pay the attorney's fees and costs. The penalty, if there's a civil penalty, it goes to the district's general fund, it doesn't go to the court. And the court, and in the subparagraph, Roman numeral five, the court could also order that that official undergo appropriate remedial training at the person's expense. These were all new provisions dealing with the individual responsibility of board members that were effective January 1. A lot of the other remedies were already in the statute. They involve if a court can award attorney's fees to someone bringing a right-to-know law case, if the court finds, and that's in paragraph one, that the lawsuit was necessary in order to enforce compliance with the provisions of the statute, or to address a purposeful violation of the chapter. That's, that's, that's been in there for some time. And then the court can also, if, if the school district had to defend a frivolous lawsuit under the right-to-know law, they can award the school district its attorney's fees and costs from the person bringing the case. And then they also, the court can order injunctions against violations of the chapter. And that, that happened in the last of the decisions from the Oyster River case. Does anyone have any questions about the?
Just a question about joining. Does that last forever, or does that eventually leave?
It lasts until the court says it doesn't, and then the court dissolves it. So, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't go away. There's no time limit on that.
Is that something boards will bring to a court to ask, too?
You could do that. You could, I mean, you could do that, I think, in, in general, because, as you know, a case is with two, two separate parties. The person who was, who obtained the injunction would obviously be able to give their input into the court as to whether they thought it was appropriate to remove the injunction or not, so. But there's no, there's no time limit on that.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think, as board members, I think the way, what to remember to avoid liability under the right-to-know law is, don't communicate with each other about the district's business by email. The Oyster River cases stated that the, the spirit and intent of the right-to-know law is not violated if your emails to each other just about scheduling matters or arranging a gathering, not talking about what you're going to do in a gathering. So, to, to the extent that you're going to use emails at all, they really should be limited to scheduling of matters and not discussions. I think as individual board members, if you have questions about the business of the district, you can, you can always send an email to the superintendent. You're not talking about the meeting requirements when you're sending an email to the superintendent. Your email is going to be a governmental record. If someone asks for it, they may be able to get it, depending upon what the subject matter of, of the agreement is. You know, and I think, I just wanted to kind of go over the concepts before I talked about the cases, and I'm not going to go into all of the details of the cases. But the 2011 case, and that is the order that's on page 17. The issues in there, as I said, were the emails of the, of the school board chair and getting access to them, the promptness of the materials being provided. They had to do with the process that was used for the interim superintendent search, also the process for entering into the separation agreement with the former superintendent. And the issues with the search process for the interim superintendent and for the separation agreement, they both had to do with conducting business outside of posted meetings. And the facts, as found by the court, were that the board made decisions, or members of the board made decisions to negotiate with the superintendent for a separation agreement, negotiated terms, hired an interim superintendent, and met with potential candidates without any recorded vote at a posted meeting or non-public meeting reflecting those decisions. And those were violations of the right-to-know law. And as I said earlier, that wasn't even, that was less than a quorum of the board that did that, and the court found that that was a violation of the law. And as I opened this up, saying you have to understand how boards act and what your authority is, because it's important to the decisions of whether you violated the right-to-know law, the court in that decision noted that the individual board members needed authorization by vote of the board at a duly posted meeting to act outside of the meeting, to meet with the press, and to reach out to potential candidates. And since that hadn't been done, those actions were unauthorized and violated the right-to-know law. And I think the other thing that I've touched upon from that decision is, you can't use emails sent in batches to avoid a quorum, because that circumvents the spirit and intent of the public meeting requirement. The other two decisions I have in here are from the same case, which is the 2012 case. There were two orders in that case, because there was a request for temporary injunction, and then there was a final hearing on the merits. And the, and the issues in that case were the hiring process for the interim superintendent and what meetings were called, special meetings or workshops, and the gender postings, which I'm not going to get into. And then the other issue was the selection of committee members for the superintendent search committee. The board at a meeting had decided upon a process to use for the committee. What ended up happening, there was a slightly different process that the board ended up using at the suggestion as of the superintendent, where outside of a meeting, some members of the board went into the SAU office to look at letters of interest from community members who wanted to have one of the slots that was going to be on the search committee. The board members then picked, picked a person that they wanted to see on the committee, put them in a sealed envelope, gave them to the superintendent, and that, at, at the next board meeting or at a board meeting, I think it was a student member, picked two, two names or two envelopes out of the, the stack of envelopes, and those two individuals were voted upon by the board to be members, the community members of the group. The board had, and the court noted that that particular process, there were two issues with that. One is, it can't be a secret ballot vote, and it's specifically in the right-to-know law, except for at the annual meetings, you can't have secret ballot votes as a board. So, that was, that was one issue. But the other issue was that the board at one of its meetings had come up with a process. The process that was used was not the process that they had voted upon by the meeting. What the court said was, even though members went in by themselves... What the court said was, even though members went in by themselves, they didn't really talk to anyone, they looked at the book, they saw who was the community members that were in the book, they themselves put a name in. It was a violation of the meeting requirement, because the meeting requirement applies to discussions and actions. So the action of an individual board member selecting a person, putting them in the envelope, was a violation of the right-to-know law, because it, you know, violated the spirit of intent. And the court also said that that process was, they tacitly approved the process by going in and doing what the superintendent had suggested using as a process. As far as the other issue about the selection of the committee members, the court noted that it doesn't matter whether the conduct is motivated because it was more convenient process to use or some other motive. It still was violation of the spirit intent of the stat. There was not, there was no evil intent there. It was just, they wanted to get the committee started. They thought this was a good way that all the board members would have an opportunity, if they wanted to go in, look at, look at the letters of interest and select someone, speed up the process. But the court said, just, the convenience isn't an excuse to violate the right-to-know law. So, and I think what's important out of that last decision is the injunction that has been issued over the school district. And I know many of you were not on the board at that time and might be aware of what the cases are. But I wanted to, all of you at least, to have the decisions, so you can see them and read them. And if you have any questions, you know, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But the court has enjoined the board from engaging in conduct that violates the right-to-know law. And specifically, two types of conduct that the court mentioned. One was voting by secret ballot. And the other was communicating by email to circumvent the public meeting requirements. The courts did not enjoin the board. There was an issue in that case as well about the timeliness of posting minutes, that they weren't done within the time period required. The court didn't enjoin that because it wasn't intentional and there had been no other allegations raised previously about that. But it's, the injunction is for voting by secret ballot. I don't think we'll have a, have to worry about that. And communicating by email to circumvent the public meeting requirement. And to me, that's troublesome in one respect, because there's conduct, it's conduct that could be less than a quorum of the board, because that was part of what one of the cases involved. It's conduct that might not meet the definition of what a meeting is, but a court can find that it violates the spirit of intent. So I think, you know, what I would summarize is, even if, as a guide to the board, even if the conduct or actions or what you're doing outside of a meeting doesn't meet the definition of a meeting, the quorum of the public body to, you know, to discuss and act upon matters within the jurisdiction, it could still violate the spirit and intent part of the statute. And that could involve conduct that doesn't involve a quorum of the board or a subcommittee. And that could, that could potentially violate the court's injunction. So my advice would be, emails between board members, don't do it. Don't, I mean, don't, don't do it. If you have to have a scheduling issue, that is probably the only thing that the court will say does not circumvent the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So, I mean, I'd be more than happy to take questions. I know I've kind of gone through things quickly. I know you've had a long night here, so.
I'm back to the secret ballots. When it involves community members, how do you do it? So that you don't hurt people's feelings, because I'm going to pick her instead of him?
Well.
We discussed this about our.
I think what a court would probably say is, if someone is applying for a position on advisory committee or a board, that they're going to be doing the public's business. It's almost like an election of an individual, you know? Who they are, what they're about is subject to public debate and public, public discourse. It probably doesn't make, many people who just are trying to help out and are not, don't have aspirations for political office, but just want to do something for the community and being involved. But, I mean, in limited instances, I think you could go into non-public session if it would be to discuss something that would adversely affect a member not of that body. But it would have to be that you knew that there was something in particular that you really didn't want to discuss in public about that individual. But I think it would be very limited. But I think, as I said, a court, if you're applying for an appointment by a school board on a committee, and that they're going to be people to choose from, in some respects, it's like an election process. You're going to have to debate different things. You might guide your discussion by that, or it might limit your discussion by that. But they said, I think there'd be limited instances where the court would allow non-public discussion about that.
Okay, so could you put all the names in the hat without the sealed envelope or without somebody putting it in the envelope? I mean, I have six people that want to do this. I have to.
That's, to me, that's not a secret ballot. When you think about it, in elections that end in a tie, you're drawing lots or you're doing something like that for a decision. I think if the board at a meeting said, "Look, we're just going to put all the names in, and the first two people that we pick out, we're going to do." Because the court didn't have a problem with that part of the case. The problem the court had was that board members went, selected their candidates, put it in a sealed envelope. And when the right-to-know law request came in for who picked which candidate, they couldn't answer that, because it wasn't marked that way. But I think if you've decided on a process in an open meeting, "We're just going to put all the names in, and we're just going to pick out two, and those are going to be the two," I don't think that that's a secret ballot. I think the secret ballot was, we're not going to say who we're going to vote for. And limiting or narrowing the pool by, that's what they did. They basically narrowed the pool by secret ballot. So I wouldn't think that that would be a problem.
Thank you.
Yes.
What if I saw YouTube TED Talk that I thought was really interesting about an issue in math? And we're not debating necessary policy in math, but obviously, math is under the purview of schools. And I think this would be an interesting thing for the school board to see, you know, this TED Talk on math. My sense is that I'm kind of close to the line. If I would send an email to everybody, you know, since we won't discuss it over, but I just wanted to share it with the board. I thought that's a professional thing to do, to watch this thing. Now, would that, if I sent it to the board, that sounds to me, that would be a violation of the right-to-know.
Well, you're getting into that, that spirit and intent part of, part of the law. I think if, I would say, if all you do is send an email with a link and say, "You may all, may all want to look at that." And no one responds, no one discusses it, no one, and that's all you do, that may be okay. The safest course would be to have the superintendent say, "Look, you may all want to look at this." Or in a meeting, bring it to people's attention, say, "You may all want to look at this." You know, I think in the example you gave, I wouldn't necessarily think that that's a violation. But people might be tempted to respond, to talk, you know, to respond, because emails are so easy. You just hit the button, you hit the reply, and off you go. So, and I think the spirit and intent part is a difficult one. And I think it's particularly difficult for all of you, because you have a court that says you can't violate by email the meeting requirements. And a lot of that is, you can't circumvent the spirit and intent. And that can be defined in different ways. Anybody else have any questions? I'm sorry if I kind of briefly described those cases. I was just kind of trying to highlight the bigger issues, so.
Thank you, Diane.
I guess, just one question, which confuses me. The non-public session.
Diane, Diane, Maria has a question for you.
Being clueless. The non-public session versus the non-meeting. What's the difference?
Well, the difference is, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't put the whole, the non-public session part in here. The non-meeting, they're those things that are specifically listed on page three of the materials, under one. The chance, social, or encounter, which is fraught with its own, own issues there. The strategy and negotiations with respect to collective bargaining, consultation with legal counsel, this is one that really doesn't, caucuses, doesn't really apply to you. And circulation of draft documents, which, when finalized, only formalize what you've done. The non-public meeting requirements are personnel matters, hiring compensation, discipline of, of public employees. Matters, if discussed in public, would adversely affect the reputation of someone other than a member of the body. I think there's pending claims, negotiation of pending claims. But they are defined as well in the statute. And I think, you know, I haven't done the legislative history of why certain things are non-meetings and why it's non-public. But when you look at what's a non-meeting, it makes sense that they would be non-meetings, where you don't have to post, if you want to speak to your counsel, that you should be able to do that and consult with your counsel without posting at a meeting. If you're having negotiations over collective bargaining, that you shouldn't need to post that, and that you shouldn't have to keep minutes of that. The non-public, you have to keep minutes versus the non-meetings. I mean, that's, that's a big distinction between the two, is the keeping of minutes. Because you don't want to have to keep minutes of what your attorney says. You don't have to want to keep minutes of your strategy for dealing with your unions. But the non-public are, as I said, the employee matters, the hiring of a person, the consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit a parties whose interests are adverse to those of the community. Pending claims. And then there's some other here that don't apply. And I think, as I said, the big, the big difference is, for those non-public, you need to keep minutes. And you have the ability to seal the minutes in certain instances. But there's going to be, there should be a record in compliance with the record-keeping requirements or the minute requirements of the right-to-know law for those. And the exemptions are in 91A:3, and that's the non-public. So I think that's why it is. And when in doubt, just look, which is which.
Call or.
Right.
And when we get the important letter from you, where can we review it?
Well, if it's, if you get a letter from an attorney and you're discussing negotiation of pending claims or threatened litigation, you can go into non-public and talk about that letter. I mean, it might be a letter in the context of a lawsuit, a letter in the context of a threatened claim in writing. You could go into non-public under that. But it would have to fit within one of the non-public sessions requirements if it's relating to a discipline matter. You could probably go into non-public to talk about it if it relates to a public employee. So if it, it would have to fit within one of those. Otherwise, you're in the Town of Madison case, where they're all sitting around in non-public discussing the letter. But there's nothing, it didn't fit into any of these non-public reasons, and what the court said was, well, if the legislator wanted it to be considering the, you know, it says consultation with legal counsel. If they wanted it to say something else, like considering the letter of legal counsel, they would have said that. So I think, sometimes it's difficult, because if you look at these, there's nothing in here that says you can go into non-public to consult with your attorney. And oftentimes, boards think that they have to find a non-public reason to go and talk to their attorney. The proper method is, you just recess the meeting to go and speak to your attorney. But if you speak to your attorney and then that results in you making a decision, that decision either has to be made in public or has to be, come within the scope of one of the non-public reasons to do it. So some of them don't work perfectly. But I think you just have to look, what is it that you want to do? If it's non-public, make sure it fits within. If it's consultation, you just recess and do that, so. Does that help, or does it confuse it more? I think the biggest one is the meeting requirement, the minute requirement.
Thanks, Diane.
Yeah.
Practice.
Just take out the, the book.
Thank you.
So the last item on the agenda that we agreed we would discuss this evening is enrollment. And I would ask the board to look in their packet at the Moheramit School specifically. And I'll try to make this brief due to the lateness of the hour. And as much as I hate to ask you to make a decision this late, I'm going to. And you look at the Moheramit enrollment in grades one and two. You can see that, almost universally, grade two is now above your guidelines for class sizes. And if this was updated as today, we now have a first grade that exceeds your class size requirement. When I look at Massway, we're in really, really good shape. Dennis and I were talking today, and we talked through various options. Dennis, you know, and I talked about aides. We talked about teachers. We talked about doing nothing. I do not think that doing nothing is, fits within the intent of your policy. And so I'm suggesting this evening, or asking this evening, for authority to hire a teacher that would be a combined grade one, two. And the reason I'm asking for a combined grade one, two is instead of fixing the second grade, we fix both the first and second grade. The average class size in all eight classrooms would drop to about 20 and a half, as opposed to many of them being at 23 and many of them being at 22. And Dennis is on board with this suggestion. And so it is the one, it's the one bubble place that I'm concerned about. As we enter the school year, we think we can accomplish this with a combined classroom. The only other place that I'm concerned about enrollment is at the middle school in grade five. And that's something that Jay is analyzing for me now. But in terms of the immediate issue, I'd be asking the board for permission to hire a teacher.
Would this be a permanent position?
For this year?
One-year position?
So is this going to be at Moheramit?
Yes.
So is there a, is there a room?
We are working on identifying space now.
Building room?
Pushing, changing, redirecting. But we'll find a space, because otherwise, you know, we're really being unfair to this group of students. We really need to address the issue. And the possibility of additional students coming in between now and the opening of school is there. We already have a problem. So, you know, my, my sense of how I deal with issues is solve the problem you have, and hopefully, it'll mitigate it as we open the school.
My understanding is that the number has jumped 10 to 15 kids unexpectedly.
We are now over 400 students, solidly over 400 students, 411 or 412 kids at this point, Dennis?
Yes.
Well beyond the Long Range Planning Committee projections for the school. On the other hand, Massway is continuing to get smaller. So I would tell you that, you know, going back to our conversations around redistricting, equalizing the population, the idea of having Massway be a kindergarten, be the kindergarten center for the district, whether it's half-day or full-day, makes no difference at this point. Brings them within 20 students of each other. So long-term, we still have to talk about that issue.
And I think long-term, we need to reopen the discussion of what does the model of our elementary education look like? And if this happened this year, it could happen next year. And I know we had some resistance toward changing our model to a K2 or K3, four through five, but if we face this every year, we're being irresponsible not addressing the root of the problem and how we best serve kids. And we heard tonight about when you have resources concentrated, you can bring in better services. So I remember receiving a letter from one of our staff stating that this person felt we would better serve our kids if we had the same grades concentrated in the buildings because then we could get limited resources or more effectively implement. So I think this is an opportunity. I support what you've decided you need to do, but I think that we, this has not been put to bed yet, and that the conversation needs to be reopened, and it may be difficult, but in serving children, our decisions aren't easy.
Can I make a motion to authorize you to hire--
I would love such a motion, Tom.
I will make the motion. I will move to authorize you to hire a one-year position, one-two position for Moheramet School. Second.
Moved by Tom and second by Al.
Maria?
Yes?
With 400 children, over 400 children--
Discussion on the motion.
Yes, well, this involves a discussion, the motion, and--
Okay.
Based on hiring a teacher and where the teacher should be, what facility the teacher should be in. Because how are you going to feed those children?
Dennis has got, working on that plan as well. It's his job as principal to manage that group of children, so he will figure it out and make it work. Our issue at the Moheramet School is compounded by the fact we do not have a separate cafeteria. Separate cafeteria, regardless of how we distribute kids, makes a difference in our programming. We have to take 90 minutes out of every single day to feed kids and not offer PE, and at Massway, we don't have to do that because they have a separate cafeteria. So that's another issue for us to be considering as we go through the next budget cycle.
Ken?
With the plan to hire the teacher, would one of the current first or second-grade teachers be considered for the one-two and the new person?
Yes, we have a veteran teacher who is tentatively open to that assignment.
Is that, is, okay, that works.
Megan?
I agree wholeheartedly with what Yan is saying. We have to look at this model. This is incredibly, I feel we failed. I mean, we should have dealt with this in the spring somehow, but it didn't get. I'm very, I mean, it's personally affected. My daughter is in second grade at Moheramet, and then my other daughter is in the fifth grade going into middle school that's affected, so it's close to home. But I'd like to know, you know, I would like to get a commitment from our board that we're going to look at this and not just pass this off. I'd like to see this added to our agenda in the near future to discuss this again. It's critical. It does impact learning. It does. I know it. And it's not fair. I mean, these children do not have enough time to eat. I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen. You know, are they going to be shuttled to another, the church to eat? I don't know. I mean, what are we going to do?
The motion is taken.
Okay. And the other question I have, I don't know when I can ask this question, so I'm asking it now, is are there children whose class placement has already been announced? Is it possible it will be changed? I think parents would like to know that.
Absolutely. And the only way that Dennis can do this work is he will be contacting parents collectively and individually to try to do the reassignments.
And that will be for grade, just students in grades--
One and two.
One and two. Okay. I think parents should know that, that I'm asking that question.
They'll know first thing tomorrow, because if we have your permission to hire, then Dennis is going to have to make those contacts.
Okay, thank you.
Just to refresh my order, are those new first graders given the option to go to Massway?
We actually have started that process. We anticipate, you know, very few, if any. But we actually went to the bus lists, actually it was Carrie Vase who suggested that today, and I contacted Lisa immediately, and she's working on that, but I suspect that that's, you know, a non-starter at this point.
Could we have a show of hands, please?
Thank you.
Seven in the affirmative, Peter in the affirmative, motion carries. And--
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Tom, second by Al, to adjourn. And on the unanimous hand, shake.
Thank you, everyone. Long night. I appreciate it.
We're meeting the 28th.